Oh, there it goes. Okay. I call the study session to order. Just for those who may be watching out there, this is a somewhat unusual night. We have a study session that will go about an hour, and then we will close the study session and open a special session where we interview candidates for an opening on the city council. So for the study session, we have the president of Clackamas Community College, Tim Cook, and board member Kathy Heisey, who, former counselor here, who's now on the board of the community college. So we invite them forward to give us an update. And I should also note, Councilor Staveng George is on the east coast, joining us via Zoom. Yes, you need the little red light to be on, to be able to be heard.
Line off, because we can only have so many on.
So many on at once. Mayor Beatty, Council President Massey, thank you so much for the time. My name is Tim Cook, and I'm the president of Clackamas Community College. This is my sixth year as president. I am actually a native of Clackamas County, grew up in Oregon City, actually fifth generation Clackamas County. I'm just really pleased to be here in front of you tonight to talk about our bond, and I think you know my portia.
Yes, nice to see you all. Glad to have a few minutes of your time this evening.
So we're here tonight to share with you some of Clackamas Community College's plans, what we're calling "plant seeds for student success." And we're considering placing a bond on the November ballot of this year. And this bond is a planned second phase of our college facilities master plan, and is a renewal of an existing bond which was passed in 2014. Right now, we're sharing our proposal around the community and getting feedback to see if these projects would serve your needs and resonate at all. So are we able to drive?
Do you want?
Okay, okay. There we go, perfect. So not everyone knows everything about CCC, so I wanted just to give you a little bit of information. So we've been around since 1966 in Clackamas County, so almost 60 years. We have campuses in Oregon City, here in Milwaukee, we have a campus, and then also in Wilsonville. We offer more than 100 career and technical programs, a variety of other education opportunities. Currently, we serve around 19,000 students annually, and employ approximately 900 people over their work there. And then, average age actually is 32, so that's incorrect. That's a little bit low, but we'll see that here in a second. And this is a slide we have that's a little bit busy. There's quite a bit on here, but it's to show that really our student population, like our community, is quite diverse. Community colleges are open-door institutions, which means anybody and everybody can come, and we serve some of the most underrepresented and underserved populations in our district. We help them access higher education, gain job skills, achieve goals, whether that's transferring to a four-year university, launching a new career, or starting their own business. As our community continues to grow and change, as education and training continue to evolve, the college must adapt and grow to meet the needs of the community and area industries. Before you go, I do like to highlight a couple pieces on here. As I said, our average age is 32. That trend's a little bit lower if you look at straight transfer students. They tend to be a little bit younger, about 24, but overall, we get students that are around 32. I think this is a big one. Only about 15% of our students are full-time. Most of our students are working adults that have families, that they would probably like to go full-time if they could, but simply aren't able to. And so that's a big impact on our students and our campus as a whole. This is yours.
So I know that you all are at least somewhat familiar with the bonds, but we'll just do a quick overview here. Thanks to all of this, CCC is considering asking for additional funding from the community to support some projects that will really help us plant more seeds for student success. If you're not familiar with bonds, basically, bonds are for buildings. It's capital improvement projects, and community colleges can borrow funding to pay for that construction, and the expansion, and the renovation of the grounds, and of the buildings. But these have to be, of course, voter-approved funds, and that happens with the bond election on the ballot. And that's then funded through taxpayer property taxes. The funds can only be used for the projects that are approved by voters, and as I mentioned, and as Tim mentioned, we're looking to put this forward on the November 2024 ballot. This renewal of the bond is really a necessary investment in our community's future that's going to prepare our students for success with modern learning spaces, innovative in-demand programs, improve community access to our college, enhance partner and community connections, and preserve and maintain our assets by updating, maintaining, and repairing aging facilities. And if you've ever been to the Harmony Campus, you will see some of the fruits from our 2014 bond, and that is where most of the health sciences programs are centered, and quite a few of the police training programs are also there as well. So that is certainly a vital part of the Milwaukee community. We're really, really grateful that we've had strong community support for the last 25 years at CCC, and it's gone back even farther than that, really. Historically, this community has supported the college, and we're really proud to be really good stewards of taxpayer dollars, at least we think. And what we're proposing for this year's ballot would be a renewal of the bond passed in 2014, and it will not raise tax rates. Since 2014, we've had a plan to responsibly ask the voters for support across these many years, and we're making this ask as part of that overall plan, and that's kind of where we're headed. So this is not a surprise, hopefully, to those of you who've been playing along at home. Up here, you can see a little more detail about what we did with the money that taxpayers were so gracious to grant to us in 2014. That was $90 million that voters approved for us to expand and update our buildings, our facilities, and our grounds. We constructed four new buildings, expanded and remodeled others, improved transportation to, from, and around the college. We increased safety and security, and we took care of our assets. We, most importantly perhaps, were able to really leverage that $90 million that we received by getting state matches for four of the projects, and we also got grants for seismic work. We got a new transit center built with some grant support, and even furniture was funded in part by grants. In all, we were able to leverage the bond dollars into more than $136 million in investment.
$136?
That's right. And thanks to the direction of our board, we did prioritize using local contractors and subcontractors when it was possible. Nearly 30% of those projects that came out of the 2014 bond went to local and small business contractors based right here in the county, and that means that a large portion of our borrowed funding recirculated, stayed right here in Clackamas County, and helps keep our local economy thriving.
So Phase Two, we've done quite a bit of work on the second phase of our bond, quite a bit of research and collection of data. A couple years ago, we developed a concept master plan for the college about where we want to go in the next 10 to 20 years. We did an athletic facilities master plan, and then we also did a mechanical, electrical, and plumbing master plan to identify the overall need. I'll just say really quickly, you'll see in that blue box there that we identified over $335 million in needs, but we're not going anywhere near asking for all of that. But there was quite a bit that we uncovered when we did all that work. We formed a bond development work group of employees, students, and board members. And over a series of meetings, worked to refine and prioritize our list of projects, took that list, pulled internally and externally in the community to see how the projects resonated, and using that information, we've prioritized the following projects. Through this internal and external conversation, we've identified and kind of grouped these into three main themes. So we want to prepare our students for success in modern and hands-on learning spaces, as education's changing there. We want to enhance our partner and community connections, and we want to preserve and maintain our existing assets. Since we're still early in the early phase of our bond planning, we're estimating this bond measure to be between about $110 and $120 million, which again will not raise property taxes. This is a renewal. Next, we want to look at some of the higher-level proposed projects within these themes. So the first one, preparing students for success. We have an exciting opportunity to construct what we're calling a center of excellence for our horticulture, farming, welding, and wildland fire programs. These programs are currently housed in some of our oldest facilities on the east end of our Oregon City campus. These are quite in-demand programs here in Clackamas County, continue to grow, need space and modern facilities to train our future workforce. I think one of the most exciting pieces about this is that Clackamas OSU Extension is looking to partner with us and actually move into this, what we're calling a center for excellence in farming and horticulture, so we can create an opportunity for all of the family generational farms and help people really grow their own food here in Clackamas County and look at all the precision farming, all the manufacturing that goes into running a farm these days. So having Oregon State is pretty exciting. We plan to also modernize our learning spaces across our campuses and older buildings to adapt to our changing learning environments and create more flexible learning spaces. The education of even five years ago is so different today than it was then. So secondly, we want to enhance our partner and community connections. So a number of our projects directly benefit our community partners. So one of these around improvements in our athletic fields, we want to renovate the track and have consideration to put in a grandstand for sporting events. We found that there's not a large space, really, in Clackamas County for people to come together for commencements, for outdoor activities and the rest, and so if we're able to do that, we see that as really a community asset. If you are ever on our Oregon City campus, and actually our Harmony Campus, you'll see people walking the perimeter and the trails, and we want to make sure that those are improved and safe for our community. And in Wilsonville, we've identified the need for more partnership space. We've partnered with PGE for more than 20 years at that campus, and we want to provide our indoor and outdoor training areas as we move forward. The campus also is our apprenticeship hub. We offer more than, we have 11 apprenticeship programs, and about 1,100 apprentices go through there every year, as well as providing technical training and general education. So we want to expand those partnerships where we're able. And then, kind of a different one, is this bond could also help us open what's called a challenger center on one of our campuses. Challenger Center is, if you think back to the Challenger, unfortunately, the spatial that exploded, there's an opportunity to create a whole center primarily for middle school and high school kids, but also for college to work on there, where they can come through and do simulations and really manage.
Since 1966 in Clackamas County, so in almost 60 years. We have campuses in Oregon City, here in Milwaukee, we have a campus and then also in Wilsonville. We offer more than 100 career and technical programs, a variety of other education opportunities. Currently, we serve around 19,000 students annually and employ approximately 900 people over their work there. And then average age actually is 32, so that's incorrect. That's a little bit low, but we'll see that here in a second. And this is a slide we have that's a little bit busy. There's quite a bit on here, but it's to show that really our student population, like our community, is quite diverse. Community colleges are open door institutions, which means anybody and everybody can come. And we serve some of the most underrepresented and underserved populations in our district. We help them access higher education, gain job skills, achieve goals, whether that's transferring to a four-year university, launching a new career, or starting their own business. As our community continues to grow and change, as education and training continue to evolve, the college must adapt and grow to meet the needs of the community and area industries. Before you go, I do like to highlight a couple pieces on here. As I said, our average age is 32. That trend's a little bit lower if you look at straight transfer students. They tend to be a little bit younger, about 24. But overall, we get students that are around 32. I think this is a big one. Only about 15% of our students are full-time. Most of our students are working adults that have families that they would probably like to go full-time if they could, but simply aren't able to. And so that's a big impact on our students and our campus as a whole. This is yours.
So I know that you all are at least somewhat familiar with the bonds, but we'll just do a quick overview here. Thanks to all of this, CCC is considering asking for additional funding from the community to support some projects that will really help us plant more seeds for student success. If you're not familiar with bonds, basically, bonds are for buildings. It's capital improvement projects, and community colleges can borrow funding to pay for that construction and the expansion and the renovation of the grounds and of the buildings. But these have to be, of course, voter-approved funds, and that happens with the bond election on the ballot. And that's then funded through taxpayer property taxes. The funds can only be used for the projects that are approved by voters. And as I mentioned, and as Tim mentioned, we're looking to put this forward on the November 2024 ballot. This renewal of the bond is really a necessary investment in our community's future that's going to prepare our students for success with modern learning spaces, innovative in-demand programs, improve community access to our college, enhance partner and community connections, and preserve and maintain our assets by updating, maintaining, and repairing aging facilities. And if you've ever been to the Harmony Campus, you will see some of the fruits from our 2014 bond. And that is where most of the health sciences programs are centered, and quite a few of the police training programs are also there as well. So that is certainly a vital part of the Milwaukee community. We're really, really grateful that we've had strong community support for the last 25 years at CCC, and it's gone back even farther than that, really. Historically, this community has supported the college, and we're really proud to be really good stewards of taxpayer dollars, at least we think. And what we're proposing for this year's ballot would be a renewal of the bond passed in 2014, and it will not raise tax rates. Since 2014, we've had a plan to responsibly ask the voters for support across these many years, and we're making this ask as part of that overall plan. And that's kind of where we're headed. So this is not a surprise, hopefully, to those of you who've been playing along at home. Up here, you can see a little more detail about what we did with the money that taxpayers were so gracious to grant to us in 2014. That was $90 million that voters approved for us to expand and update our buildings, our facilities, and our grounds. We constructed four new buildings, expanded and remodeled others, improved transportation to, from, and around the college. We increased safety and security, and we took care of our assets. We, most importantly perhaps, were able to really leverage that $90 million that we received by getting state matches for four of the projects. And we also got grants for seismic work. We got a new transit center built with some grant support, and even furniture was funded in part by grants. In all, we were able to leverage the bond dollars into more than $136... Million dollars, million dollars in investment.
$136?
That's right. And thanks to the direction of our board, we did prioritize using local contractors and subcontractors when it was possible. Nearly 30% of those projects that came out of the 2014 bond went to local and small business contractors based right here in the county. And that means that a large portion of our borrowed funding recirculated, stayed right here in Clackamas County, and helps keep our local economy thriving.
So Phase Two, we've done quite a bit of work on the second phase of our bond, quite a bit of research and collection of data. A couple of years ago, we developed a concept master plan for the college about where we want to go in the next 10 to 20 years. We did an athletic facilities master plan, and then we also did a mechanical, electrical, and plumbing master plan to identify the overall need. I'll just say really quickly, you'll see in that blue box there that we identified over $335 million in needs, but we're not going anywhere near asking for all of that. But there was quite a bit that we uncovered when we did all that work. We formed a bond development work group of employees, students, and board members. And over a series of meetings, worked to refine and prioritize our list of projects. Took that list, pulled internally and externally in the community to see how the projects resonated, and using that information, we've prioritized the following projects. Through this internal and external conversation, we've identified and kind of grouped these into three main themes. So we want to prepare our students for success in modern and hands-on learning spaces, as education's changing there. We want to enhance our partner and community connections, and we want to preserve and maintain our existing assets. Since we're still in the early phase of our bond planning, we're estimating this bond measure to be between about $110 and $120 million, which again will not raise property taxes. This is a renewal. Next, we want to look at some of the higher-level proposed projects within these themes. So the first one, preparing students for success. We have an exciting opportunity to construct what we're calling a Center of Excellence for our horticulture, farming, welding, and wildland fire programs. These programs are currently housed in some of our oldest facilities on the east end of our Oregon City Campus. These are quite in-demand programs here in Clackamas County, continue to grow, need space and modern facilities to train our future workforce. I think one of the most exciting pieces about this is that Clackamas OSU Extension is looking to partner with us and actually move into this, what we're calling a Center for Excellence in Farming and Horticulture, so we can create an opportunity for all of the family generational farms and help people really grow their own food here in Clackamas County and look at all the precision farming, all the manufacturing that goes into running a farm these days. So having Oregon State is pretty exciting. We plan to also modernize our learning spaces across our campuses and older buildings to adapt to our changing learning environments and create more flexible learning spaces. It's the education of even five years ago is so different today than it was then. So secondly, we want to enhance our partner and community connections. So a number of our projects directly benefit our community partners. So one of these around improvements in our athletic fields, we want to renovate the track and have consideration to put in a grandstand for sporting events. We found that there's not a large space, really in Clackamas County, for people to come together for commencements, for outdoor activities and the rest. And so if we're able to do that, we see that as really a community asset. If you are ever on our Oregon City Campus, and actually our Harmony Campus, you'll see people walking the perimeter and the trails. We want to make sure that those are improved and safe for our community. And in Wilsonville, we've identified the need for more partnership space. We've partnered with PGE for more than 20 years at that campus, and we want to provide our indoor and outdoor training areas as we move forward. The campus also is our apprenticeship hub. We offer more than... We have 11 apprenticeship programs, and about 1,100 apprentices go through there every year, as well as providing technical training and general education. So we want to expand those partnerships where we're able. And then kind of a different one is this bond could also help us open what's called a Challenger Center on one of our campuses. Challenger Center is, if you think back to the Challenger, unfortunately, the spatial that exploded, there's an opportunity to create a whole center primarily for middle school and high school kids, but also for college to work on there, where they can come through and do simulations and really manage, almost like a Starship Enterprise, come through and do the whole different pieces on there. And it's really related to STEM education, starting as early as possible. And so we have an opportunity to put one of those on our campuses through the support. And then the third one, we want to preserve and maintain our assets. So it's not as exciting as probably some of the other two, but some of our facilities are aging, and when we hit 60, some of those things get older. So we want to make sure that we're doing the renovations and repairs. We want to increase our accessibility. We want to address some safety hazards, improve our security in our systems and our buildings, make them more reliable and energy efficient. I teased our facilities person that picture on the left with the yellow and our physical plant there. It actually looks really nice and clean. I was like, that's not a great picture if we're asking people to support this, but they do such a great job of maintaining all those. But those are old, old pieces, and to keep them up is getting costly. So energy efficiency upgrades, outdated and inefficient central heating and cooling plant will create savings for us as well.
Like the 2014 bond, this proposed 2024 bond measure would really be a good investment in our future and would make our local tax dollars stretch further. And they'd be eligible for up to $16 million that we've tracked so far in match funding from the state. Additional federal grants and that partnership with OSU's Extension Service has a lot of promise and possibility to it as well. We are excited about what we may be able to leverage there. When we look at the cost, the college is estimating that the proposed $110 to $120 million bond, if it was passed, would renew the existing tax rate of just 25 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. This is estimated to not raise property taxes. It's really important to us at the college to be not just good stewards of our tax dollars, but to also keep our costs in check and keep delivering a high-quality educational experience for our students while we're, as we said before, planting the seeds for student success. It takes money, but we'll be very careful with those funds. And that's pretty much what we've got. We'd love to hear from you. We'd love to hear your thoughts about these projects and whether or not they resonate. Is there anything we're missing? What's most important to you? And we also invite you to visit our website to review these proposed projects and submit your feedback. After we hear from the community this spring, we'll be refining that project list that you'll find on the website, and that'll be done based on recommendations from the community before we consider placing the proposal on the ballot. Thanks for your time, and let us know if you have any questions.
I'm sure we have questions. I know I do. And I guess I'll ask one of mine first. In the 2014 ballot, we were told, or bond measure, we were told it's for this building and it's for this building, and you're not really saying that this time. And it'll also say that there was a big investment at Harmony, and you're not really saying a lot about what this would bring for Harmony. So can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, I can kick that off. So part of the refinement here, the reason why we haven't said it's for this building or another building, I would say we definitely can confirm that one of the buildings would be that Center of Excellence. So that would be a building, that'd be at Oregon City. And then we're looking at the Wilsonville Campus to figure out, we're probably not going to put a new building there, but trying to figure out how we can do some more workforce training there. And that's what I would say about Harmony. So we have the... Harmony is, as Chair Heisey said, is primarily our healthcare programs. And so we've got state-of-the-art programs in nursing and phlebotomy and dental assisting and several others. And then we've also now, because of that second building from the 2014 bond, you can do an entire degree there, associate's degree there. So we have that access. So we're looking, as we think about Harmony in the future, we're trying to figure out where we can expand further. We'd love to put some sort of a training clinic on there for our healthcare programs. And so we've been discussing that with potential partners, but we don't have one identified yet, so it's not in this bond right now. But it's something that we're trying to figure out as we move ahead. I've had a few conversations, but nothing that was cemented enough where we said, oh, we could build another building here. There is some interest potentially down the road to look at some sort of police or fire training, but again, not far enough along where we were ready to commit.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, because I thought even 10 years ago, there was some thought that the fire district was going to even put some office there, or there was going to be some co-location or something.
They were going to put their administrative building right on our campus, which would have been wonderful, but they actually ran out of money with their bond and weren't able to do that. So that was unfortunate, because I think that would have been a good partnership. I've had some conversations with the chief about some training programs, some short-term things that we can do at that site. And so we're continuing to work on that as well. But I don't see with this bond a third building at Harmony right now. It's more of how do we really maximize the resources that we have there? And then how do we plan for additional programs as we go along? Because we do have some training programs for corrections, for human services, in addition to the healthcare programs there at the Harmony Campus.
And I just want to highlight how popular those programs are and how well-respected those programs are. We have a huge amount of demand for the folks who go through those health sciences programs. They're very well-regarded in the nursing program world around the metro area. So what's happening right now on Harmony is vital and very useful to the broader community. So I think that the prospect for finding those partnerships and making those future expansions of programs at that site are... I think it's just not ripe yet. We've just got to kind of play with it a little. And the other thing to know is that the workforce demand is changing so wildly and rapidly, particularly when it comes to health sciences. And it may be that there's things that are happening now in terms of, do we need to look at even more of a certificate program model? We're seeing that in a lot of our programs, where it's not even an associate's degree anymore. It's a six-month certificate, and that's where the phlebotomy degree or certificate, which is a pretty new rollout, is kind of testing the waters and seeing how that goes. And it's in direct response to conversations with employers who've said, this is what we need.
Yeah, medical assisting is a great example of that. There's such a demand for medical assistance that actually, before this, we can't wait for a bond. We're actually finding money internally to expand that program at the Harmony site. So we should probably note that here somewhere that we're doing work even before the bond, because there's just such a demand for it.
Other questions? Yeah, Counselor Massey?
Yeah, interesting presentation. Appreciate all you do. I'm a supporter of the community college systems. You know, the four-year college degree is kind of taking some hits lately. Does that mean that you see more demand for your programs because people are questioning the four-year college degree?
It's an interesting discussion. In some areas, yes, in some areas, no. And it's been... I give a whole talk on the future of higher ed that, kind of post-COVID, it's really a whole different ballgame now. The workforce demand, if you look at the degrees needed, the majority of them are two-year degrees or less, when you look at that. There's still kind of a cultural phenomenon around getting that four-year degree. And you're seeing all the criticism of that, or people getting debt and concerned about, is there ROI there for a four-year degree? So in that context, yes, I think we're getting more people that are really questioning. Is this worth it? Is it worth my time? And we're seeing some expansion there. But I tell you, it's strong amongst parents and others, this idea that college means four years. And I give tours all the time, and I'll show anybody anytime our facilities, because when they come and they realize the opportunities we have, these short-term degrees that we're working on, we're starting a new one around limited energy and around our solar and our wind energy programs. They can come out of a six-month or a nine-month program and make $80,000 a year and with no debt. And so it's helping people really understand that is the challenge. So I would have hoped that we would have seen this really large-scale shift, and people go, oh my gosh, community college is where it's at, workforce training is where it's at. But I think there's still some more kind of statewide marketing, maybe national marketing, to change the perception still of what that means and what that looks like.
And a follow-on is, who's your competition?
Yeah. You know, that's a great question, too. The obvious ones would be Portland Community College, Mount Hood Community College. But in reality, we work really well together. We complement each other, and we have students and staff that kind of work or go across those ones. I would say a lot of our competition is for-profit universities who end up spending almost 50% of their budgets on marketing, when we're about a half or 1% that we spend on our marketing. So those are the commercials you see, where you can get a coding degree in six weeks or something else, and they end up using up a lot of financial aid, and they don't get credit for those. Those are competition. Online in general, so if you can take a class from anywhere in the world, there's competition there. I will add, though, one of the real highlights of our programs, we are the first college, two-year, four-year, to offer an early childhood education degree entirely in Spanish. And we do it entirely online, because that's what they asked for, because they're working all day and then they take the classes at night. So we have a cohort now from Cooney System in New York that's taking classes there. We have a cohort from Denver, Colorado, and I believe one from New Mexico. So we used to be like, okay, most of our students, 90-some percent of our students are Clackamas County or local. But as we look at that space and we look at what we have to offer that's different, we're not being shy about saying, hey, come take classes here, because certainly other people aren't shy about taking away some of our online programs and courses. Portland State's not really a competitor. We play well in the sandbox with them. They're a very heavy transfer institution, so they rely on the three metro community colleges. I would say the bigger universities, Oregon State's and the U of O, there's a little bit of competition there, some of the recruitment, some of the things that they have, certainly some of the amenities that we have. We don't have a football team, and that hurts us, I think.
Yet.
Yet. No, we're not. Let me be clear, because we're on record, we're not going to have a football team.
Yes, thank you again for the presentation. I appreciate your time and the information you provided. I also appreciate the number of trade programs you have and certificates and degrees, because that's where there's a huge gap right now in Oregon for that, specifically for plumbing and electrical. So I do appreciate that. I think it would be important to point out also to anyone at home watching or who plans on watching later, how critical this bond is for the community college, and what are we going to miss if we don't pass this bond? Because I think people do need to understand how vital passing the bond measure is going to be to continue a lot of these programs that you're doing, and as well as the STEM, which I'm interested in hearing more about. But if you can just explain a little bit about what we'd lose in the community college without this bond measure?
Yeah. I mean, I can start off while Tim is taking notes here. It's so... I think one of the things that's more nuanced that we don't put in the presentation, because it's harder to explain, is how much work the college has already put into maximizing the utility of the space that we currently have. There have been studies done to see how do we make use of each and every room on campus and make sure that it is being fully utilized. We're trying to make sure that spaces are flexible so that students can be in them in the way that they need to be in them, because again, the face of education is changing and how we teach students is changing so rapidly. And every one of our campuses is being very well utilized. So just in terms of taking care of what we already have and continuing to be able to make that maximal use of these campuses, we really do need to take care of what we've already got. These buildings are old. Community colleges came out of an era 60 years ago. These buildings, many of them, are just kind of... You know about life cycles for buildings. So that's one of the pieces that we really need to do.
Yeah, and just to continue on that, some of those original buildings were designed for the... Kind of like this room, right? Where you've got chairs lined up and seating. And the reality is, education is just not like that anymore. I mean, everyone's got a computer in their pocket, and there's access to information. And so when we design classrooms now, we really look at, do we have the technology in there so that the instructor can be talking to students in the class while students who are at home are learning? And we're also recording, and we're also gathering this information and having all this available. So it's not the stage on the stage, standing up an lectern anymore. It's really this multi-use capacity. And that's true for kind of a regular classroom. So really, some of those older buildings, refitting those and really rethinking that piece of it. What we found today is that about a third of our students are online, taking online classes. About another third are taking maybe an online class and taking some face-to-face classes. And then another third or so are fully face-to-face. And those ones that are kind of coming in, we're finding that they're trying to find space to, after they're in their class, to go on somewhere and hop onto a Zoom call or hop onto an online call. So even like little... I joke, we were just at a place where I saw a bunch of old phone booths that they had inside. You know how you used to go and take your call on the phone booth? I was like, we need a whole bunch of those, literally, where you can pop in and have a private meeting, where you can sit in on a class. And then these flexible even conference rooms, where you can hold three or four people. They can get onto a screen. They can do their work. And so in some ways, it's carving up a lot of our existing spaces and creating flexible spaces where we're going to meet face-to-face here, but then we're going to go be online here and change that around. Even in all this, I'll give this as my last one unless there's more questions about it. Even our automotive program, where prior to the pandemic, they would have said, there's no way we can offer any of this online. You have to be here to work on cars. They spent a lot of time, because all of our programs had to figure out how to do it during the pandemic, but they spent a lot of time figuring out, hey, there's really parts of this program that you can learn. You can watch videos. You can learn about 2:00 in the morning or wherever you want to do it. And then when you're here and really working on the cars and doing that face-to-face, you can get that piece of it. So we've even changed the way that shop is set up and how they're functioning there. And I would say that there's examples of that in our welding program. There's examples of that in our horticulture, where we're really trying to think, how do we stay state-of-the-art and make sure that we are offering those education programs regardless of where you're at?
And I'll just add that that Center for Horticulture and that partnership with OSU is a really exciting one and would meet a need that we've had in Clackamas County for a long time. The extension has sort of been, you know, like, where do we go? Where do we fit in for a while now? So to be able to partner with them as an educational institution that has the space and to really create that kind of cutting-edge space where people can learn will elevate the horticulture programs we already have and, I think, really meet the needs that we have in the region. I mean, growing food and growing plants are both meeting basic needs, and they're also a major economic driver for the whole Willamette Valley.
Yeah, but Counselor, your feedback's really helpful there to say, what wouldn't we have? I was actually waiting for the question. Maybe you're going to ask it. Why do you even need spaces at all in an online world? And I've said constantly, as education's evolved, having those spaces where people can come and interact with each other and be flexible and do the online, do the face-to-face is really where we excel and where we need to excel. If we don't, if we're not able to do that, then we are truly left behind. And then we'll see, people have less and less of a need for us if we were to just continue to say, come into this classroom and sit here and aren't able to accommodate all the other learning opportunities.
Yeah, actually, when you mentioned the rooms, the private rooms for people to have, I actually thought that was an excellent thought, because not everyone has access to something like that, or even at home, right? Even at the demographics of your students' population, it seems like it'd be beneficial.
We expand our Wi-Fi in the parking lot, because we find some of them are sitting in their cars, trying to be in class. And it's like, that's not the best place to learn.
I appreciate that. I look forward to supporting this in the fall.
Thanks. Come and visit us. You're welcome. Anytime. There are events happening on campuses all the time. We'd love to see you. There's great music and all kinds of things that happen at the Oregon City Campus. But I personally am interested in creating more community connections with the Harmony Campus. So if you have ideas, reach out. I think you probably know where to find me. And thanks for your time.
Yes, thank you.
And raised for a while, so.
Hey there. Thank you for the information.
Thank you for the information and the presentation and for beaming me in from Washington DC. I just had a couple of questions. One, I think I read your slide correctly where it said that you were able to leverage about a 50% additional yield on the amount that you had bonded. Do you anticipate that that's about the same rate you'll still be able to access? Or have state granting programs changed in the time between bonds?
Yeah, so that, about 32 million of that 2014 bond was through state matches. So that the way that the program's set up now is for every building, we're, we're eligible to apply for an $8 million state match. So when we, we said in that slide, we anticipate 16 million. Right now, we're looking at two buildings. And so depending on if, you know, we're able to do three buildings, that could go up to 24. We don't know yet what OSU Extension would be able to bring to, to the table. But they've indicated that they, you know, they would make a sizable investment if they, they were to move into a building. And so that, that would increase that as well. So whether we'll get to 50%, I don't want to commit to right now. But I, I think, you know, we were just, Chair Heisey and I were just in DC last week, too. And, and we were, you know, talking with our delegation about opportunities to invest in some of the, some of these projects and some of the things we're working. So we anticipate, not just with the state match, but also some federal dollars to really come through and support that. And then we've had a number of successes over the last several years in getting federal and state grants. And so I would anticipate that we'll have a significant match above, above that 110 million, if that, that is what it being. But I, I don't, I can't commit to say that it would be like 50, you know, 55.
Sure. Okay, great, thank you. Then I also had a question about your contractors and subcontractors. You had mentioned that a lot of those contracts go to small businesses that are local to the area. Do you have policies around the requirement for percentages of those businesses that are owned by women and minority populations?
Yeah, so in the 2014 bond, the goal was that we had 10% of our contracts, either minority-owned, women-owned, and, and local businesses. I think we got closer to 30% by the, by the time that was all done. And so we haven't, for this one, the board has not weighed in and said, you know, what that goal will be. But I would assume that we'd have, you know, we'd have a target again of at least 10, if not higher, you know, as we do that. And I know that's really important to, to us and to the board.
Great. And then I want to second or maybe third the conversation about workforce development and having specific tracts that are available, especially in the fields of behavioral health and addiction substance abuse treatment programs. And, and I'm also, maybe we can follow up offline, interested in some conversation about what it would look like to have a pathway for community health specialists. And that is more of a certificate program, but it's something that can be, it's a curriculum that can be adapted. And then once they've attained that certification, then the work that they do in community has the ability to be reimbursable through Medicaid. So maybe we can follow up around that. The last thing that I wanted to highlight, and it's great that you just came back from DC, and the conversation I had with Senator Wyden this afternoon was around childcare facilities and the fact that Clackamas County has huge deserts when it comes to childcare and affordable childcare, publicly available childcare. So in the enhancements that you see on your campus, what do you see as the future pathway for childcare?
Yeah, this is another great example of work that we're doing ahead of this even. So we've had Head Start and the YMCA offering childcare on our campus for a couple decades. And so we, you know, and those are training programs, right? For our early childhood education students. So it's a, it's a, you know, a training, training facility, but they're, but we offer childcare now. And then I mentioned our Spanish ECE program and that, that expansion as well. What we learned from our own, and I've been in a lot of these conversations about the, the deserts and what we can do to, to help that. What we've learned on our own campus is that many people don't need full day or even half-day. And so just this quarter with the YMCA, we're, we're offering drop-in childcare, which has been very popular. And so we see expanding that as well. So we, we see ourselves in this conversation about, you know, certainly educating providers. We're, community colleges now have the capacity to offer applied baccalaureate degrees, so bachelor's degrees in certain areas. And we are thinking that early childhood might be our first one because it's really a strength of, of what we do. And so that's certainly a big part of it. But then we are also part of the conversations. And we've had conversations, too, about do we expand the Milwaukee campus? Do we expand to the Wilsonville campus for these childcare, childcare as well?
And I think we also have work to do that may be part of the bond, honestly. But in terms of being, being on the radar for local businesses, that this is something that we are working on and that we are a resource for partnering with perhaps, or just making sure that places where people need childcare know that we are producing childcare providers. I think, I think that linkage is still a little weak. So I'm certainly interested in talking with some of the local businesses and just kind of saying, hey, guys, we're here for you. What, what can we, what can we do to make sure that you know that, that we can help you and help the people that you employ get their needs met and have their kids be safe?
And I can follow up. I'll, I'll send you an email so we can connect and talk about the, the program as well that you were discussing. So we can, we can talk.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you both.
Council President, Massey.
Just a comment, it was interesting, you mentioning a place where people can go to do their, their other job once they get out of class. I was in the Seattle Airport this weekend and they're all over the place. They go by think tank, Zoom rooms or whatever. I'm sure they, you know, you rent them for a half hour or whatever. But, you know, the boxes are out there. So at any rate, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they're just like a larger, slightly larger than a phone booth. It's like, oh, you know.
You don't have to stand up. Thank you.
Yeah. I did have a couple more questions. One was, you said the bond, the 2014 bond is, this would be a continuation. And I guess I'm, I'm a little confused because I thought bonds were usually like 20-year things. So when it came, when it was taken out, it was only taken out as a 10-year?
It's actually a continuation of our 20, or 2000 bond. And so there was some refinancing and some things we did to, to get that 2014 bond. And so it's, it is a little bit confusing in that way. But, but we've, essentially this year will pay that off. And so we want to renew that, that original, which was a 25-year bond initially what we took out.
Okay. And then, sort of related to the question from Councilor Stavenger, but, you know, on the childcare subject and on the other kinds of training you do, I guess I'd be interested to know to what extent you work with Clackamas Workforce Partnership? And also to what extent you work with like the Small Business Development Centers and stuff like that?
Yeah. Yeah, on both accounts. I was actually in a meeting with Clackamas Workforce Partnerships today. And we, we work constantly, together constantly and really have a good symbiotic relationship. So that's, that's really solid. And then the Small Business Development Center is actually on our Harmony campus, you know. And those are across the state, often on community college campuses, but not always. Or I think there's a couple that are on university campuses and elsewhere. I'll just brag about our, you know, our SBDC, it's, it's one of the best in the state. And that's not just me talking, I hear that often from, from the state representatives there. We do some really great work with them.
Great. All right. Anything else for, anything you want to say in closing?
Well, I certainly appreciate your time and appreciate the support. We are fortunate to have Chair Heisey join us just this last July. And probably not a surprise to you, or not last, last, last spring, but in last July stepped up and took over his chair. So it's, it's been great having that connection here in Milwaukee. We are very proud of the Harmony Campus and very proud that it, when it got annexed into, into Milwaukee so that we're actually, we actually have a home. And so we, you know, we're very, very proud of that. And anything that we can do to, to connect and support the city, we are, you know, we're there to do. Whether it's, you know, you want to, you want to have events there on our campus or, you know, you need us to show up for things, we're more than happy to do it.
And I'm sure we'll be at the farmer's market this summer. But if there are other events where you'd go, hey, you know, it'd be, we should probably invite CCC. Let us know. We'll, we'll show up.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And now we have a few minutes for council reports. I believe Councilor Stavenger had one she was saving from last week. Is that, do I remember that correctly?
Hmm. I'm not sure, Mayor.
Okay.
But why don't you come back to me and I'll see if I can remember?
Okay. Other people with council reports?
I hadn't planned to have a report, but the dog ate my homework. I actually was on the Water Consortium Zoom call while I was in Alaska. And I didn't bring my notes from Alaska into, in tonight. So I'll, I need to punt until the next meeting. I hope I don't have to go to Saturday school.
Fair enough.
The only thing I have is Wes is having a, a naming competition to name the new boring machine, the tunnel boring machine they have to, to basically bore out a half a mile for the new outfall. So they're asking for names. And I submitted in the name Al Bore. We'll see how far that one goes. But yeah, if anybody's interested, they can, they can name it, anything they'd like as well.
And is that, that's for the Oregon City location?
Yeah, for the Tri-City.
They're putting in a new outfall there?
Yeah, for the treated water to go out to the Willamette River.
Okay. I don't have a council report, but I did have a legislative letter that I sent around to you guys. And I don't know if Scott put copies here. I'm not seeing one. Okay, yeah, yeah. So this relates to the childcare desert topic that we were just discussing. The Clackamas County Children's Commission, which is sort of the big Head Start program here in Clackamas County, is looking to buy the YMCA at the corner of Monroe and 224. They're also looking to buy another YMCA property in Oregon City, both of which were shuttered during, both of which were childcare centers that were shuttered during COVID. And so this is just a letter in support of their ask to the legislature for the money. They are, you know, sort of going everywhere. I met with their director last week and, you know, they're, they're putting out their hat everywhere they can to try and get the funding for this. But they asked for a letter of support for the, using with the legislature. So that's what this is. People have any comments?
I read the letter earlier. It's, it's a real need. I can support this letter without reservation.
Thank you.
Actually, I apologize. I did have a, I was just in the wrong notebook. I had a cab meeting.
Okay, well, let's finish this and then we'll come back to your, yeah. All right. Councilor Stavenger or Councilor Kosterbadi, any concerns with this letter? Are you okay with sending this letter? Okay, got a, got a head nod from Councilor Kosterbadi. Councilor Stavenger?
Yep. Love the letter.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it's great that they mentioned the Wichita Center.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We will figure out who it has to be addressed to and get it out tomorrow or the next day. Thank you. Okay, so Councilor Kosterbadi has.
Yes, I'm so sorry. And this is actually my fault because I forgot I had two notebooks because they all, they both look the same. But we did have a cab meeting last week on the 7th. We got a presentation on the current state of the addiction crisis in Clackamas County. And this one, I wanted to, I did take specific notes on this to bring back to us. Just right now, some statistics we're looking at, Oregon currently ranks second in the US for substance use disorder. It ranks first in the prescription opioid misuse and first in meth use currently. Fentanyl and meth are the biggest drug use currently in Clackamas County as well as Oregon. Milwaukee is one of the harder-hit cities in the county. They are looking at a recovery-oriented system of care. There are some components being put in place to, to take this to a different direction and make sure that people are supported throughout the recovery process as opposed to, you know, a brief stop stabilization and then, and then pointing in the direction of services as opposed to making sure they're receiving those services. There, there is Project Hope, which is recovery support for overdose survivors and, and those in recovery. They do have two peer recovery mentors, one case manager and one community paramedic that's going to be established, currently in the works. The goal, they have three goals set for Project Hope. One of them is to reduce the number of people who overdose. The second is to improve quality of life. The third is to bridge gaps in care. And again, this is for connections to resources, which is imperative. There are also working on an EMS overdose response project, which would have EMS respond to overdoses. So that way it would be more of a immediate response as opposed to getting there too late. These are just some of the notes that, that I took down for, for that presentation. And they are more than welcome, or they are more than happy to come to council and present any of this information if we like. I know myself and Councilor Stavenger have been working with a, a local student who's come in to council to speak on the, on the issue. So I just thought I'd extend that, that they are willing to come in and present to all of us if we're interested.
Thank you. Anything else? Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor Beatty, before we adjourn, I just want to make sure we didn't discuss an order of questions for the special session. Did you want to decide that now?
Oh, no, we'll discuss that when we start the special session. Yeah, yeah. We'll just rotate that, I think. Anyone else? Councilor Stavenger, anything for you?
No, Mayor, I think I went through most of my meetings at the last session that we had. And apologies, I can't remember the, the item that you remember. But I think if we put our brains together, maybe I'll be able to bring it back at the next meeting. And it's almost 9:00 my time right now, so I can blame it on the time, right?
Yep, yep.
Thanks for coming back to me, though.
Okay. All right. Well, do we have any other legislative things? This is also our little window to discuss legislative things. I guess not. So, okay. Well, then I guess we will adjourn the special session. And we have five minutes until our appointed time on the, I mean, I'm sorry, adjourn the study session. We have five minutes till our appointed time on the special session. So I would like to take a short break. ...in city limits. Oh, am I not on? Oh, there we go. Due to the nature of this special session, there will be no opportunities for the public to speak during today's meeting. Spanish translation services are available upon request. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. For more information, contact the city recorder at 503-786-7502. Servicios de traducción en español está disponible cuando se ha solicitado. Se pide al público que solicite servicios de traducción y otros servicios de accesibilidad por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión. Para obtener más información, llama al secretario, al secretario de la ciudad a Translation services are also available in other languages. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Kalapuya et cetera treaty with the federal government in good faith. We offer our respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. All right, so the rest of the evening is about interviews. We were, we lost, we had a resignation by Councilor Nicademas that set us on this path to an interview process tonight, followed by people running for office in May and again in November. It will be a busy year to fill the seat. The Councilor Nicademas left. We have seven applicants tonight, so I feel really fortunate that we had that many people interested in serving our community. Three of them have specified that they are only interested in serving on an interim basis. They are not people who intend to run for the office in the long term. I guess that's sort of neither here nor there. The questions are the same for everybody. We have four questions that we're asking and we have four counselors to ask them, so that works out nicely. We will, I think, rotate who does the first question. So I'm going to ask Counselor, normally Counselor Stavanger sits there and she gets to start, but since she's with us remotely, we won't put her in that position tonight. I'll ask Counselor Kosterbadi to start with the first applicant with question one, two, three, four for Counselor Stavanger. And then the next applicant, I'll ask the first question. And then the third applicant, Counselor Madsen can ask the first question. We'll just kind of rotate so we're not all asking the same question every time. We do have 15 minutes per applicant and the staff has set up a very nice countdown calendar, although it says five minutes, but it will say 15. The applicants are welcome to make an opening statement if you want to, or we can launch right in questions. It's your call as you come up. Just know that we have 15 minutes. We have four questions. And similarly, I think counselors can ask follow-up questions if you are so inclined to have a follow-up based on something that the applicant says. But again, please keep an eye on the clock and, and be careful that we don't run the applicant out of time before we get to the fourth question. Does that all sound good, clear? Okay. I, uh, oh wait, let me see. Okay, yeah, covered that. I would just say in the, you know, it's interesting in some things we do as a city council, we have limits on who we can talk to. And when we, when we're a quasi judicial body, for example, in a land use application, we have limits in who we can talk to. We don't have that in this situation. We could talk to the applicants. And I happen, there's one applicant here I'm not acquainted with, but I happen to know, have met in some capacity, all the other applicants. But I feel like, I guess, I feel like in the interest of full transparency, I want to, I want to, I want to say who I've spoken to during this process. So yes, I know most of these people. I have spoken to them at some point, but I have not spoken to them about the appointments or this process, except for the first two applicants on our alphabetical list, Mr. Abma and Mr. Anderson. I have had personal conversations with both of them about this process. We have also gotten letters in support of Mr. Anderson's candidacy. And I say that not to make other candidates feel like, oh, I should have gotten letters. I should have had people write letters. That's not at all my intent. I just want to be transparent about what kind of things came for us as counselors. So it was not expected that people have letters, but it certainly was not foreclosed. So I just wanted to be transparent about that. I don't know if any other counselors want to talk about that?
Yes, for transparency, I have, I too have spoken with Will Anderson myself, but I think that's the only person that I've spoken with. I did have a, one text exchange with David. He had asked me if, that if somebody had resigned and I mentioned yes and I had encouraged him to apply, and that's about it.
I know three of the applicants, but I have not spoken to any of those applicants about the application process and, and declined to do so.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if you want to say anything, Counselor Stavanger, you're not required to.
Yep, no problem. I know several of the applicants served with, a couple of them in a community capacity. And I have received communication and/or have spoken to two of the applicants in preparation for this session.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, then we will ask Ms. Madigan to start our clock and we will invite the first, and we're doing this in alphabetical order for anybody who's watching out there. We have seven applicants and the first is Shane Abma. Ask him to come forward. And again, you can say a few words of introduction if you like, or we can launch into questions, whatever you want to do. No, hit the button so the red light comes up.
Thank you. Well, with a name like Abma, I'm usually first if it's alphabetical, so it's hard to get around that. Yeah, I would like to just say a couple of things, just to, I do know, know you, some of you anyway. I don't know all of you well, but just for the record, and I will say that my current job is I'm at Metro where I'm a senior attorney and I represent or advise the housing department, excuse me, the housing department and the recycling and garbage division. So those are the two divisions I primarily advise. Prior to that, I was a city attorney for multiple cities in the metro region. And then prior to that, I was a commercial litigator and a junior high math teacher. So I've been in Milwaukee for 16 years. I've been in the Portland metro area for 25 years. And I am a resident in Ardenwall neighborhood. So that's just a little about me. And then I'm ready when you are for questions.
Then I will ask Counselor Kosterbadi to kick us off with the first question.
All right, thank you, Shane. Good to see you. The first question is, what do you think are the three most important concerns facing Milwaukee?
All right, so I did bring some notes. I'm going to try and speak contemporaneously, but just in case I forget something, I might be looking down a couple of times. I think the three, the three most important things, and it says, says facing Milwaukee. So for the first two, I think it's facing the city of Milwaukee, and that's budget constraints and the ability to provide services at the current levels. And then climate change, which is existential and that's going to affect every city. And my third thing that I would say is just general cost of living and especially housing. And I think that affects the residents more than the city per se. So to address each of those just a little bit, and I know that the budget constraint kind of leads into question two, so I won't say as much about that. I know that council with respect to climate change reaffirmed that as a goal. It was a goal when I was on city council and I was here when we adopted the Climate Action Plan. So the city has done what it can do. Of course, it is not, you can't, we can't control the climate ourselves, but we can do our part. So I think that, that this is a, it's in some ways an ongoing, going to be an on, well, it will be an ongoing issue. And now whether it should be an ongoing goal of the city, I'm not sure. But I do think that that's one of our long-term things, that we always should use that lens when making decisions. With respect to budget constraints, I'm going to save that one for the next question. And then the other thing that I think that residents are facing is just a general cost of living. And we see this in the economic news. Housing is huge here. That doesn't affect, everyone is a homeowner, but whether you're a renter or homeowner or what, you're going to have to pay for some sort of housing. And we know that those costs in the Milwaukee area are huge. And I think that's in part, not only is there a housing crisis in Oregon and the Portland metro region, but I think that Milwaukee is such a desirable place that we're seeing an increased housing cost because we are not completely downtown, but we're close to downtown. It's a desirable city and I think that that increases costs. So those are the three that I would consider to be the three challenges, biggest challenges facing the city.
Okay, so you alluded to, it is our next question. Knowing Milwaukee has a limited tax base and budget, are there specific areas where you would reduce or increase funding?
There's nowhere that I can think of right now, without looking at the numbers and the data and the budget, that I would say increase necessarily without looking at it, given that, that Milwaukee is going to be facing some serious budget constraints. We know that's coming. That's true for all cities and that's partly reflection of measures five and 50 and what it did to cities and their budgets. So I know that we have some huge budget constraints and without, without me knowing all about the data, I don't want to sidestep the question, but I can't think right now of anything that I would increase. So I would say that there's no increase. As far as reducing, there could be possibilities of reducing cost in personnel or construction projects, road projects. But I know that the city, I know from my experience, and I don't think it's changed from when I was on council, the city runs a pretty lean staff and does quite a bit with limited resources. And I think that city manager Ober's done a fantastic job and, and the councils have as well in adopting the budgets. So we know this is going to be an ongoing, ongoing problem and I think it's really going to hit crunch time for this city pretty soon if, as we start doing, as the city starts doing negotiations with the unions and moving forward in this budget season. So I can't imagine anything right now that I would increase. And I've mentioned some things that we could potentially decrease, but again, I don't want to speak too much into the details without looking at the data. I will say, as a resident and talking to my neighbors, there's nothing that I hear people saying, I can't believe the city is spending so much damn money on this or that. So there's nothing that jumps out at me as a resident or that I've heard from my neighbors other than just general increases in utility bills and things of that nature, which, you know, they're trade-offs. We have to have a certain amount of fees and costs to run a city. And I mean, we can do community surveys and get a better idea of what the community's thinking, but nothing jumps out at me right now that I would increase.
Thank you.
Question number three is, what are your thoughts related to the city of Milwaukee's relationship with surrounding jurisdictions, whether they be other cities, districts, county, et cetera? You can choose your own jurisdiction.
Okay, well, this one kind of hits home a little bit for me as a, working for Metro. And not only do I work at Metro, which does of course a lot with the jurisdictions in the, there are, I think there are right now 24 cities and three counties in the metro jurisdictional boundaries. So we work with all of them. And as it, as it so happens, the two divisions that I advise do a lot of work with the cities and the, I feel like I'm not really focusing on Counselor Stavanger, but I hope that's not a problem. I normally would like to look at everyone as I'm talking, but I'm focusing on the three here. So we, my two departments work quite a bit with the local jurisdictions in the recycling world. In the recycling world, we do a lot of grants to the cities. We do a lot of funding, capital funding to the cities for making sure they hit their statewide reduction, waste reduction goals. In the housing world, I advise a supportive housing services program. And as you may know, there's a supportive housing services tax that then Metro collects and then provides to the three counties for services. And I help draft those IGAs. I work with those county partners. I work with county staff, county attorneys. So I've done a lot with counties and cities, just as my role at Metro. So in some ways, it's an easy question to say, what, what are my thoughts related to relationships with surrounding jurisdictions? My thoughts are, you should have good relationships with surrounding jurisdictions, obviously. And I've seen it in practice. I also know from my time on council that we have, sometimes you have issues with your adjacent communities. We talked a little bit with Lake Oswego about converting an old railroad bridge to a pedestrian and bicycle path, and so you would want to have good relationships with Lake Oswego. There's the annexation, I think there's an IGA regarding what we're going to do with the land around I-205 and Happy Valley. That's a long way off, it may never happen, but you want to maintain those good relationships. And we saw how those relationships can be strained when Happy Valley removed itself from the Parks District. In addition to cities and counties, it mentions districts. Metro is actually a district. It's a Metropolitan Service District. So I think that relationships with Metro are important. I think relationships with our school district, with the Parks District are important. And I believe that in the long, in the long run, we want to do our best to try and maintain positive relationships. But I will also just backstop it at the end by saying, there comes a time, sometimes, when you have to look out for the residents of Milwaukee and what's best for the residents of Milwaukee. And even if that is taking action that your fellow cities or other jurisdictions may not be pleased with.
Counselor Stavenshaw.
Thanks, Mayor. I have question number four, which is, what do you feel has been accomplished by the SAFE Program? Should Milwaukee maintain, increase, or reduce the SAFE Program?
As the name would imply, I think the greatest thing that it's done is safety, improved safety, and I think it's been successful in that regard. So that's the first thing. I'd also say that it has, it increases the health of its residents of Milwaukee because you're out walking more, you feel safer, you get out more. Third, when you're out walking, you meet, you meet your neighbors, you meet others. So I think it increases a sense of community amongst neighbors and residents of the city. It also improves the desirability of moving to Milwaukee. To answer the question specifically, I think that Milwaukee would either maintain or reduce the SAFE Program funding. The only reason that I would consider reducing is because of the cost increase on residents and the ongoing cost of living. But the program has been an incredible success already. I would not increase it. And I want to see the figures more before I took any action to reduce it. I will tell you that when this came up originally in front of council, I was on council at the time, and I was a no vote, I was the lone no vote for this. And it wasn't that I was against the program. I felt at the time that the funding and the timeline that we'd given ourselves to implement it was too aggressive and was going to be too expensive for residents. And I voted no. I thought that we should have extended that program out further so that we could have reduced cost. I will tell you that since then, with COVID, and now that I'm a big, a much more of a walker myself and a dog walker, I've been out quite a bit more in the city. And I think that that's one of two votes that I took that I would probably reverse if I was doing those again. I think I have, in the past few years, just from being out and walking a lot more myself, seeing some of the barriers and the problems and the, and I, when I'm out walking, I put my jacket on, I put that reflective jacket on even as it's getting close to dusk. I have my blinking lights. I make sure that my dog leash is reflective because it's unsafe to be out there without sidewalks. And I, I'm fortunate that my, that my street has a sidewalk, but as soon as I walk just a little further, I lose sidewalks. And that's the path that I generally take with my dog. So I would not increase it, but I would maintain it and potentially reduce it just if we're, if it affects the budget or the cost of living for the residents. But it's also a fee, so it doesn't really affect the city's budget in a sense that, it more, it more affects the residents because it's a fee. It's not coming out of discretionary funding, I don't believe.
All right. Well, that's all of our questions. And we left a little time on the clock, but I think that's okay.
Someone turn the mic, the mic on for the mayor, please.
Sorry. Sorry. That's all of our four questions. I think we, you know, there's just little time left in your 15 minutes, but I don't think we have to use, use them all. So we'll thank you for coming and spending time with us. And I think you know how the rest of this evening is going to go, so.
All right. Well, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Just one point of conversation for the council before we move to the next applicant. Would it be better to start with Counselor, because of the problem of everybody looking at those of us in the room and not at Counselor Stavenshaw, would it be better if Counselor Stavenshaw had asked the first question?
Yes.
Yes? Everyone here is saying yes. Is that okay with you?
Doesn't matter to me. And I feel, I don't feel compelled to look at me.
Okay. Well, okay, so we're going to do that. We're going to start with Counselor Stavenshaw on every interview, and then we'll kind of switch it up on the three of us at the table. Okay. So Mr. Anderson.
Mayor?
Yes?
Apologies. Would you like me to rotate the questions as well, or do you want me to start with number one all, every time?
I think best to just start with number one every time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Will Anderson, would you like to make an opening before we launch into questions?
Absolutely, sure. Mayor Beatty, Milwaukee City Councilors, my name's Will Anderson. Thank you for having me today. I will be the first to admit that I am something of a public policy nerd. I have spent my entire career in public service. I worked in constituent services, on campaigns, as chief of staff in the state legislature, and now I work as an advocate for behavioral health providers at the state legislature. Throughout all of this, I've come to understand that if you really want to have a meaningful impact on people's lives, you have to do it at the local level. That's where the streets that we take to work are, that's where our local businesses are supported. That's where we're doing so many things that people actually feel in their day-to-day lives. My partner and I chose this town to settle down and one day raise a family, and because we really saw this culture of togetherness and community involvement that we really valued. I'm running because I want to be able to give back to a city, and I believe that my experience in public service will be an asset to the city going forward. I'm proud to be endorsed by a broad coalition of folks, including Representative Mark Gamba, Metro Counselor Christine Lewis, former city councilor of the parks, planning commission Chair Jacob Sherman, Budget Committee Chair Leslie Schachner, and I'm hoping to earn your support today as well. I'm happy to turn it over to Counselor Stavenshaw for questions now.
Thank you. My first question is, what do you think are the three most important concerns facing Milwaukee?
I'll start with an overview. I think the three biggest concerns are our city budget, especially fiscal stability over this next biennium, affordability with a focus on affordable housing, and our park system. In terms of our budget, we're entering into a budgeting process for the next biennium with a lot of outstanding questions. I think first and foremost is our ongoing negotiations with our staff union about a potential cost of living increase. We have, as Counsel, as Shane Gamba mentioned, the possibility of adding a full-time climate person that really would be this capstone on what I see as a decade of climate investments and work as a city. The last is the future possibility of expanding council services in some ways, whether that is adding on park services as a city or adding on different small business programs. There's that uncertainty about what we want to do going forward. Now, all of this is happening in the context of Measures in Five and Fifty, in which our cap on property tax increase has reduced our spending power relative to inflation year over year. With this in mind, I think we face the very real possibility that we as a city will have to choose between cutting services or finding a new revenue stream to support the current service level. In that regard, I support capitalizing on a portion of our property tax revenue that has been left unaccounted for by joining the Clackamas Fire District to help pay for some of these services and really maintain the services that we're putting out towards the city. Now, I see this rate increase as a short-term fix because we still are operating under the constraints that Measures Five and Fifty place on us. As we're having this conversation, I think we need to have a long-term conversation about, in 30 years, what are the diverse revenue streams that are indexed to inflation that we can use to be able to make sure that we have a fiscally stable and healthy city budget? Now, as we're having this conversation, I think it's also important to balance the needs of fixed and low-income Milwaukeeans. If we are considering a rate increase of some type, are there rebates? Are there progressive tax programs? What are ways that we can make sure that this cost burden isn't going to be overly challenging for some families? This leads into the second point I have to make about affordability. I really, when I think about an affordable working-class community, I think about Milwaukee. For a long time, if you're a middle-class family in the metro region and you want to find a place to settle down, Milwaukee has been a spot for you. But after 30 years of really limited growth, I think that this has begun to change. I mean, in the last decade, we've seen housing costs nearly double. A lot of my friends and neighbors I've talked to say that if they were to move to Milwaukee right now, they couldn't, they just can't afford it. The reality is, people are being priced out of our city, and I don't think that aligns with our values or identity as a working-class place. Now, I want to acknowledge that council has already taken some really important steps to address this. I think about the mixed-use zoning that we have downtown, a lot of our great developments that we're seeing popping up. We have our urban renewal area that we've been investing in, as well as a comprehensive plan to be able to upzone different parts of the city. But that being said, we've seen in our community survey that housing affordability and affordability at large remains a strong issue for Milwaukee residents. And I think in light of different tools that we have now coming from different levels of government, it's time to revisit this conversation to see what types of programs we could do as a city. I think specifically I'd be interested in different metro affordable housing bond options that we have, coordinating with the county on homelessness and affordable housing funds, as well as looking at the governor's two housing packages, one of which he passed last session, one of which was proposed this session, that would add almost $1 billion in state funds to different construction projects across the state. These are great opportunities and really add to the number of tools that we have in our toolbox to do this work. And so I think it's high time that we come back to this. As we're doing all of this, I'd love to find ways that we can square it with our 2040 vision of community hubs and neighborhood hubs. I think this is a great way to have mixed-use, commercial, high-density development in all parts of the state that people are really excited about. It's great when you are able to walk 15 minutes to a bakery or a local brewery, and being able to have density come with those perks, I think will make this very palatable for Milwaukee residents. The last thing that I want to touch on is our park system. Now, I want to acknowledge, in some ways, this isn't a concern facing Milwaukee residents. Our community survey found that 80% of residents were satisfied with our parks district. But one of the things that I kind of love about local government is, we're not just looking at the bare minimum that people have, but we're looking at ways that we can build a city that's exciting and livable, that people want to enjoy and be a part of. And for me, parks are the best way that we can focus these energies and go forward. I grew up in Bend, Oregon, where we had some of the best parks in the state. I might be so far as to say some of the best parks in the world. And I want in 10 years to be able to say, my kids are going to some of the best parks here locally. Now, we have a few barriers when it comes to doing this. First and foremost, we have not invested in our parks in the same way that surrounding jurisdictions have. Our investment rate has been half, sometimes even a third of what local jurisdictions are paying. And if we're having a serious conversation about parks, this is something that I think we should consider. Now, a majority of Milwaukee residents have said that, in that same community impact survey, they would be willing to invest more in our park system. And it's something that I'd love to have a community conversation to really consider and to dive into. I think another barrier that we face is our relationship with NCPRD. To be frank, I don't think they've always been the best partners in this work, and I'd love to see just a conversation about what our relationship is with the district going forward. I'm particularly frustrated to see how some of our SDCs have been gone to fund projects like the Oak Lodge Library, while Milwaukee, the letting library here, had to pay for those services, had to pay for the adjoining parks. The fact of the matter is, we still have not seen Milwaukee Bay Park, a promise to Milwaukee residents by the county, funded in a meaningful way. And the fact that our SDCs are being taken out of our community and spent on these other projects is really frustrating. And so as we're having these conversations about what is, what does it mean to be a working-class city? What does it mean to have a city where people are proud to call home? I want to make sure we have a parks district that represents those values as well. So between parks, our budget, and affordable housing, I think we've got a lot of work cut out for us, but those are my three that I'd say.
Thank you. Counselor, Counsel President Messy, why don't you take number two?
Sure. Knowing that Milwaukee has a limited tax base and budget, are there specific areas where you would reduce or increase funding?
I think in many ways, Milwaukee does a great job of stretching our limited budget and really punching above our weight in this regard. But one area that I would highlight moving forward that we need to invest in is our staff. We have seen some really high rates of inflation over the past few years, and I think this necessitates a cost of living increase. It's funny, I've heard from both Emma and Ann about how they came to Milwaukee and fell in love with our city because we had some of the most engaged residents. I think the flip side is true, too. We come to Milwaukee, and the reason we have engaged residents in a functioning city is because we have some of the best staff in the entire metro region. And you don't get those high-quality staff without paying them a high-quality commensurate wage. And so as we go into this next biennium, I think it's really important that we have a budget that reflects our values in this regard, reflects the fact that we want high-paying, working-class jobs here in Milwaukee in our city government. This isn't just an issue about staff and equity here. This is an issue about the services that we're providing at large as a city. If we want to have big projects that we engage in, it's important that we have stability in our staff going forward. I think about the Kellogg Creek Dam Removal Project, and the fact that we lost a staff there is going to be really challenging. We have to find someone new to step in, learn the ropes of this project, understand the different players and the funding sources. That takes time, and that delays our implementation timeline. And so if we're going to be doing stuff in parks, if we're going to be doing stuff with small businesses, whatever it is going forward, we need a staff that's prepared to be here for the long run, and that means paying them a wage that reflects those values.
What are your thoughts related to the city of Milwaukee's relationship with surrounding jurisdictions, cities, districts, the county, et cetera?
I don't think I'll be too bold to say that. I think it's very important that we're working well with our surrounding jurisdictions. We're a city of 21,000. We can't do that much on our own. We really have to work in partnership with all these different jurisdictions to be able to achieve big things. That being said, I think Milwaukee has done this very well in the past. It's behavioral health, so it's near and dear to my heart. But the 23-hour stabilization center, I think it was a great example of this. Partnering with the county to be able to bring this to our community and make sure it has a place will help us address some of the addiction issues that we're seeing in a region and will be a really important project. I think about the orange line with Trimate. A big reason my partner and I chose to live here is because this is a community that is served by transit. Trimate's relationship isn't just bringing new people in, but it's helping connect our city with the region at large. I think about, I mentioned earlier, the Clackamas Fire District. It's a great example of how economies of scale can help us deliver services to Milwaukee residents at a more effective way and be able to reduce some of our tax burden on our residents. And last, I just want to mention, the council meeting that you had last week in partnership with the school district, I found really moving and really powerful. The low-income housing tax exemption program is the exact type of partnership that we can achieve when we work well with our surrounding jurisdictions, and that type of work is really encouraging to me. That being said, I think we also have some challenges. I think to the state legislature, where I am involved in so much, we saw last session, House Bill 3414 that the governor introduced, was a housing bill that really would have put limits on our local ability to control land use decisions in a way that I don't think squares with the reality we see in Milwaukee. We can hold true to our climate goals and our need to build affordable housing at the same time and do that. Milwaukee is living this reality, and being able to communicate that to the legislature and the governor's office is an important thing to do. And I look forward, if serving on council, to be able to help support Rep. Gamba in amplifying these discussions going forward. I think especially as we talk about Measure 110 and giving treatment services here, as well as possibly in 2025, talking about transportation package, having Milwaukee's values represented not just here locally, but at the state level, will be really important. The other relationship that I've already mentioned a little bit is our relationship with NCPRD. And now, I want to point out, the Wichita Center is an example of both a success and a failure. This is a service that provides services to some of the most low-income folks in our community who really need these protections. Yet, you see this breakdown has happened in the relationship between the school district and the parks district that has left a lot of people wondering where they're going to find essential services. And so I see this as an example of how we can make sure that we're communicating with other folks and connecting with them to be able to have these strong relationships to provide stability in our services going forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Kostrobody?
Question number four. What do you feel has been accomplished by the SAFE program? Should Milwaukee maintain, increase, or reduce the SAFE program?
Thank you for the question. As someone who works in public policy for a living, I'll be honest, when I was looking for a place to call home, I wasn't just looking for safe streets that I could bike on or good schools. I wanted to find a city that was doing really exciting policy work. For me, that's the SAFE program. Remember, Portland tried something similar, and they had councillors lose reelection because they didn't have community input for something like this. While here in Milwaukee, we engaged our residents proactively and built a culture around transportation safety. So when I think about what this program has accomplished, first and foremost, I think that we see this program has made this shared community value about the need to invest in transportation safety. And I think as we think about other projects that we want to do as council, let's hold that as a lesson. We need to be actively engaging the community proactively and getting their support for our programs to be successful. Now, I'm someone who lives and breathes transportation safety. If you've seen my application, you'll see that I serve on the state's Transportation Safety Committee and the Safe Routes to School Committee. And so, the projects that have been happening in the SAFE program, I've seen in other communities across the state, and I know the value that they bring. I think that this squares well with a lot of our equity and climate goals. The folks who live on the east side of Highway Two Twenty-Four have not had the same access to transportation investments. They don't have the same sidewalk access, they don't have the same transit opportunities. This is a homegrown solution to be able to provide that safe infrastructure. As we think about our climate goals, thirty percent of our emissions statewide come from transportation. It's incumbent on us as cities to be able to reduce the number of people who are taking car trips. And a big part of that is making sure people feel safe to do that. We know from studies that people will not walk or bike if they don't feel safe doing so. And so it's really important to have safe options for folks. In terms of how I see this program going forward, I would love to see a conversation happen around our neighborhood greenways, especially in light of our TSP update. I want to see comprehensive safety standards on our neighborhood greenways. I want to see certain expectations of stop signs and speed bumps, or whatever safety measures are in place be consistent across the whole neighborhood greenway system. Whether this is funded through the SAFE program or some other way, I think that this will be a really important investment going forward. I've got about thirty seconds, so not many quick time for a question left. But thank you, guys, for the opportunity. I really appreciate this, and I'll turn it back to y'all.
Thank you. Thank you. You used your time well. We appreciate it. All right. Do we have, is David next? Okay, I've lost my alphabetized list. Hold on, hold on. Are we ahead of schedule? Okay. I should have my list, though, just for... Okay, there we go, there we go. All right. David Chitzazan, is that how you pronounce it?
Yeah. I have a fun way to remember it. Just think it's Chitzazan, think pizzas on the oven. Like, there's a pizza on the oven. That's what my old HR manager at my old company used to tell, that's how he remembered it. So that's how I tell everyone.
Okay. Did you want to make an opening statement?
I would, I would. Thank you. Again, as I think most of the city council knows from the Budget Committee and other meetings we've been on, I'm a heavy preparer, so I will do my best to not read too much. But thank you all for having me. My name's David Chitzazan, Milwaukee resident. I hope everyone's doing well. Thank you, guys, very much, especially Counselor Stavendjord in DC for staying up late for us and interviewing all of us. I know off-hour stuff is hard, and I really appreciate it. Also, just hearing the beginning of this is really interesting to know that people were messaging or were speaking with you guys beforehand. Now I know that you can try to chat. I'm a very above-board kind of person, and I really strive for transparency. So I never tried to make that effort, given that it's an interim position appointed by you guys. So as a quick background in my history, I grew up in Clackamas County area, including spending considerable time down the street at the Saben Schellenberg Center. Just want to give a quick shout-out. I hope none of them are watching this, because they should be having fun right now, but shout-out to the Saben Schellenberg business students who are competing at the DECA State Conference this week. Good luck, guys. I attended University of Oregon, where I double majored in accounting and economics. My day job is an accountant for a commercial aircraft lesser. My wife's a teacher at a Title I school. My two-year-old son is a huge fan of the Ripsody remix and trains. I know that's way too much information, but I'm an open book. I'm also the son of two parents who came from outside the United States, as my dad is from the Middle East and my mom was born and raised in the Philippines. I wanted, I mentioned that because with that, I've been immersed in society through an outsider's lens, and it's really helped me focus a lot of my life on inclusion. So on top of my history, I've been very heavily involved in community work in the area. I'm currently on the Milwaukee Budget Committee, the Milwaukee Redevelopment Community Advisory Committee, the Citizen Utility Advisory Board, volunteer at the aforementioned Saben Schellenberg Center, and last year I attended the Milwaukee Leadership Academy in 2023, which gave me one of my favorite things I learned about Milwaukee, that we have a mascot named Millie the Goose. I love it. My old roommate in college was the Oregon Duck, and I want to be that, I want to be a mascot, that sounds fun. I was also, I will mention, I was also recently appointed to the Clackamas Community College Budget Committee, where I'm looking forward to helping with their upcoming budget. On all of these committees, especially the Milwaukee ones, I believe that y'all have seen that I have been deeply engaged asking questions at both a micro and a macro level. Shout-out, economics major. Looking at items in specific detail while also looking big picture, discussing the complex issues that face the city. I also pride myself with the ability to work with the city on a personal level, and I think the experience thus far has been superb. I know an appointment to city council is a difficult, puts the city council in a difficult position because whoever nominated, is nominated, becomes the de facto favorite in the May and potentially November race. I wanted to let you all know, reveal time, guys, my wife is pregnant with our second child that we're expecting, so I won't be running in the May or November races. So given this, the fact that I'm not a career politician or lobbyist, I feel I'd be a perfect fit to serve as, on the interim city council timeline. As mentioned, I've had the pleasure of working with y'all on city council, often as well as a lot of the city staff, Anne, Emma, Michael, Scott, Jason, Joseph, Judy, Paul, Jen, you name it. Therefore, the city has a pretty good idea of what I'd bring to the table. And you wouldn't have to be burdened with picking a favorite for the upcoming election. I love the city of Milwaukee and would be extremely honored to be nominated to serve as interim city councillor.
Thank you, thank you. So I will go to Counselor Stavendjord for the first question again.
Great. David, what do you think are the three most important concerns facing Milwaukee?
Great question. I think the three most important, we'll start number one. We talked about it a lot at the Budget Committee meeting yesterday. In my opinion, it's infrastructure. Being on the CUAB as well, I've learned, there's a lot of lead paint. There's a lot of stuff that was built a long time ago that needs to be fixed. We have dry wells that have sediment in them, they need to be fixed. So, the city has a large amount of projects in the work and the SAFE, SSMP, as well as this year, the urban renewal. And we need to ensure a smooth and transparent process with the residents. Second one, I believe it's that we are an expanding city, which I think is a very good thing, I should say. I'm sorry, I'm speaking a little quickly, sorry. It's an expanding city, which is a very good thing. I think we need to make sure, in an expanding city, that communities are not being unfairly displaced, while also ensuring that new communities coming in and new demographics coming in are met with an accepting and safe environment. The third thing is cost of living. For lack of a better word, and I think we can swear, but shit's expensive, as has been mentioned. Everyone's feeling the effects of increased costs of goods, housing. It's very tough for the city to deal with because it's a global issue. But the city needs to be working, in my opinion, hand-in-hand with residents to make sure that these are, that we aren't falling short of the basic needs of individuals. The city can help to continue with their utility assistance programs, and any increases in bills are limited to the extent possible for the low and middle class.
Counselor Kostrobody, would you pick up with question two?
Yes, Mayor. Question two. Knowing Milwaukee has a limited tax base and budget, are there specific areas where you would reduce or increase funding?
Yes. I think I would increase infrastructure, as mentioned. I know Anne mentioned at the budget meeting yesterday, shout-out Anne, that tranche three of some of the capital improvement projects. But we just really need to make sure that we can continue to foster those environment, to foster rebuilding of the capital improvements. The other area I think that isn't really mentioned as much is disaster preparedness. As I believe Will mentioned, that climate change, I mean, it's been a huge strain on the community. We've seen the fires 2020, up to now. The increased inclement weather. Personally, our house had a pipe burst last year. It was brutal. And so we need to make sure we're ready for these types of disasters because, as we all know, proactiveness is always better than reactiveness. And it's a lot cheaper, as I learned, again, from a pipe burst. Always unscrew the hose on the pipe, everyone.
What are your thoughts related to the city of Milwaukee's relationship with surrounding jurisdictions, cities, districts, the county, et cetera?
I think it's a very good thing to have. There's a lot of unincorporated areas around us and neighboring cities. I was thinking about this question, and I remembered at the Christmas ships event this last year. We, I met a friend of a friend who's from Gladstone. And that's rad, that people are coming from inside and outside of Milwaukee to these types of events. I think we continue to foster that relationship as we're doing events. You know, don't just limit the events flyers to being inside of Milwaukee. We can distribute them around the area as well because I think it's great that we're a community environment. My wife taught in Oak Grove. I'm going to do another shout-out, but shout-out Riverside Tigers, that was the elementary school she taught at. And the times I volunteered there, it was great connecting with that community because unfortunately, we're really divided by highways. I know a lot of that sometimes can be intentional, but the more we can foster positive relationships with surrounding communities, the better.
Thank you. Council President Messy?
Sure. Number four question. What do you feel have been accomplished by the SAFE program? And should Milwaukee maintain, increase, or reduce the SAFE program?
Great question. I think they've done a good job. I think the SAFE actions for everyone, it's really great. That King Road intersection fix that the city engineer Jen mentioned was really enlightening because I did not realize how dangerous that intersection was for residents. And there's a bus stop right there. Those are vulnerable residents taking the bus. I think it's awesome that the city got ahead of that, and we are working to protect pedestrians in the area. I'd also like to mention, as a quick anecdote, that Milwaukee's a pretty small city geographic-wise, and if there's a budget for it, I think we should try to increase, at least keep the same and/or increase the SAFE, the SAFE program. Because my favorite thing in the world, one of my favorite things in the world, is just randomly running into a friend that I wasn't expecting to. Your, let's picture, let me create a scene for you here. It's the farmer's market at nine fifteen AM. My son's got a croissant. We're having a nice time walking around the farmer's market, and we run into a friend that we hadn't seen in a while. It's great. I love just running into people like that. And the more walkably you make a city, the more that kind of relationship in community building is encouraged. I do have a conclusion, if that's okay. Yeah, in honor of the, the second shout-out to the Saben Schellenberg students, what we always tell the students when they're giving presentations is you do the three Ts. You tell them, you tell them what you're going to tell them, then you tell them, and then you tell them what you told them. So I'm going to do the same right now. So in conclusion, what do I provide to the city of Milwaukee? Like I said, I'm really above-board with everything that I do. I really strive in being as transparent with y'all as I can be, as Anne and Emma probably painfully know. I always want to make sure things are done properly. I'm a very detailed person who is really able to look at small details while looking at the big picture of things. I've received feedback from councillors, committee members, and the staff, that the type of questions and input that I've been giving have been very positive and helpful. Without beating a dead horse here on this one, I'm very deeply involved with the city. I've been involved in the Budget Committee, CUAB, Redevelopment Community Advisory Council. I also, in December twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, I mentioned this in, I mentioned this in my application, but actually gave testimony to help reword one of the city codes relating to the camping ordinance to help strengthen the protections for individuals. So I'm very, very involved in everything, and I think my body of work with y'all has shown that. But overall, I really do love Milwaukee. It's an amazing city to brag about. I think it's so cool that I can tell friends that Bing Cherry, Bob's Red Mill, World Series MVP Scott Proshes, and the Umbrella Academy are all from our home. I think that's really cool. It's rad. And given the undertaking the city's going to go to, be going through in the next couple of months with all of our projects and the budget, I think I'd be a perfect fit for interim city councillor. Thank you so much for taking the time to speak with me.
Sorry, sorry. Next, we have Corey Hester. Come on up, Corey. We are a little ahead of time. What are we, about ten minutes ahead of time? Corey, you weren't here when we started, so I did note that people can make an introductory set of remarks before we launch into questions. If you want to kind of introduce yourself and talk about your background a little bit before we launch into the questions, but we do have a fifteen-minute clock there counting us down, so.
Good evening to all the city council members. My name is Corey Hester. Born and raised in southeast Portland, but grew up in this city. As one of the few black Americans. I've got two of the brothers. They went to Milwaukee High School, eighty-five and eighty-seven. Me and my twin brother graduated from Milwaukee High School in ninety-seven. Went to Milwaukee City High. Now it's the Waldorf School, and then we went to Cecil Well. And so, I've been in this city for a long time. Currently, I work at Nike, and I'm in Army Reserves. I'm getting ready to retire. And so, you know, I've seen this city grow in a major way. It's been beautiful to see the city grow like this. And after, or during the 2020 summer, and you know, with the George Floyd situation, and I just figured, you know, I thought maybe it was my time to get more involved in local government and see what I can do to help. So I started off with a listening session happening in September of 2020. I did the Leadership Academy in 2020. Then that led me to being voted on to the CUAB. And then, that also led me to being part of the Credit Steering Committee, which I currently serve on. And so, I worked with the Milwaukee Police on multiple occasions, been involved in hiring interviews, and also with the city interviews. Sorry about that. So, and yeah, like I said, you know, I just, I grew up in this city. I watched it grow, and I just, you know, I wanted to be able to, you know, help make this community, this city better, safer, and to do my part. I don't want to sit on the sidelines anymore. I figure, you know, I need to get involved to help the city grow.
Great. Thank you very much. Counselor Stavendjord is going to ask the first question.
Thank you, Corey. Question number one is, what do you think are the three most important concerns facing Milwaukee?
I think the three most important concerns facing Milwaukee, I think safety, you know, the continued focus on safety. As we grow as a city and with crime, you know, rising across all cities here in this area, I just think, I think that's still a concern. The second one, I think, is having that continued focus on partnering and building that relationship with the Milwaukee Police Department. and building that relationship with the, the Milwaukee Police Department. Um, I think that should, you know, always be one of the, the, the main objectives. Um, and I know that that, that does tie into, to safety, you know, building that trust, getting more community members to, to get to know the, get to know the police officers, trust them. Um, having that partnership, um, I think that's also important and, um, still a huge concern. And, um, the other concern I think is having just that, um, continuing focus on connecting, um, uh, people of color, especially black Americans that move into this, uh, into this community and finding a way to connect with them, um, getting them involved, um, and, and having them play a part in, in this city growth.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm going to take the second clap one this time since I keep ending up with the same question all the time. Um, knowing Milwaukee has a limited tax base and budget, are there specific areas where you would reduce or increase funding?
Um, so I always think that, uh, public safety should be something that we should, uh, um, continue to fund. Um, but, you know, I thought about this too, um, and, you know, I think this is something that, you know, we should really ask the community members, uh, you know, the people of our city and see what they think. Um, because I think it's important for them to understand the, the budget that Milwaukee has. And I think they should be able to have a say in, um, the direction that we go with, with funding. Um, for me, you know, so, uh, and, uh, me and Ann have talked about it, um, in the past, but, you know, with like with the whole parks thing. Um, I, I, I understood the situation with, with the funding, but me as a community member, I thought, okay, great. You know, we're going to give money for parks. We're going to have a say. I mean, I even, I even had diagrams of what I pulled from, from a park in, in China. Um, like an exercise, uh, uh, park or a park that had exercise equipment. And then when I found out that, hey, you know, a, a lot, a lot of that was already planned, it was kind of like, oh, well, okay. That would have been nice to at least put that as a, as a, um, suggestion. So that's why I think it's important and I think we should ask community members, you know, what do they think versus, um, that being something that is discussed, um, internally.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Council President Massey.
Um, yeah. Number three is what are your thoughts related to the city of Milwaukee's relationship with its surrounding jurisdictions, which would include cities, districts and the county?
I think it's important and I think it needs to happen. Um, we see, we see already at the law enforcement level with Milwaukee PD partnering with, with, um, Cleveland County, the Catholic Oregon City. They do, um, different, um, um, operations and missions. So I think, you know, at the city council level, I think, I think it's important, um, or e- even just at the city, at a city level, I think it's important that we, you know, talk and speak to people in, in other cities and other, you know, local areas, talk, talk about best practices, um, create that partnership. Um, I got a friend who's on, uh, Gladstone's, uh, city council. I, I, I know they've been doing a lot of work with, with Cleveland County on different, um, um, objectives. So yeah, I, I think it's important and I think, I think we need to have those relationships with the other counties, with the other cities, um, draw on, on best practices and, um, work together.
Thank you. Um, Councillor Koshrobbani?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, and thank you for your service in Army Reserves. Corey, thank you. Uh, what do you feel has been accomplished by the SAFE program? Should Milwaukee maintain, increase or reduce the SAFE program?
Um, so yeah, with the SAFE program, I, I mean, the, the sidewalks, there's been a bunch of sidewalk work. I think, I think a lot of the road improvements that's been happening, uh, projects, uh, like on Lake Road and then the new, uh, sidewalks down by River Road by the, the, uh, the underpass, you know, so stuff like that. It's, 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 it's great to see because it's, it's making it, uh, safer for, um, pedestrians to, to travel, making it more accessible, um, for people that have, uh, AD disabilities so that, that they can maneuver and get around, uh, safely and, um, and, um, more efficiently. Um, and so, um, the city of Milwaukee has done a great job with the SAFE, uh, program, I think. I mean, they're, they're not just talking about projects that, that they can do or that they're trying to, uh, do. They're actually getting it done. Um, and I mean, just even today I was in downtown Portland. I mean, you know, some of those streets, some of those roads or, you know, the sidewalks are just a mess. But, um, the city so far with the SAFE program have done, um, tremendous job of repairing sidewalks. Um, and, and making pathways, um, more accessible for the ADA community. So, um, and I, I think we should keep a high focus, um, on that program. Um, because that, that's, that's part of, um, Milwaukee's growth, uh, for years to come, so.
Great. Thank you very much, Corey. Um, we're through with our questions and there's still about five minutes and that's okay. We don't have to use all the minutes. Not everybody has used all the minutes, but if you have any last things you want to say before we wrap up and move on to the next person, you're welcome to.
Um, yeah, you know, I just, um, at first I wasn't going to put my name in the hat. Um, but, you know, I was talking to a friend last week and we talked about risk. Um, and sometimes you gotta just take a risk. Um, I've, I've taken multiple risks and it, it has benefited me. And I, I, I thought, you know, take a risk here, um, to see what I can do. Um, I do know that I, um, I would bring a, uh, unique, um, uh, thought process to the, to the, to the council members. Um, I'm definitely willing to learn more and, uh, get educated. Um, and I could bring, I could, I could definitely bring some, some good conversations, um, to the table. So, um, I would love for the opportunity. Um, this is something that is, uh, I never thought I'd be, be doing at this point. Um, but I would definitely bring a unique outlook to the city council if I were to be selected. And thank you for, uh, giving me the opportunity to even be interviewed, so.
Well, thank you for coming in and, uh, we appreciate you taking the risk. So thank you and, uh, yeah, we'll move on to the next applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, does anybody feel the need for a break? We are a few minutes ahead. Are we plowing ahead? Not seeing anybody clamoring for a break? Okay. Uh, so our next applicant is Mary Rao. Oh, yeah. And, um, Mary, um, you, we have 15 minutes for each applicant and, um, we have four questions, as you know. Um, we do, you can start with an opening statement about yourself, an introduction if you like, or we can jump right into the questions, however you prefer to proceed.
Well, let's jump into the questions. It sounds like there's going to be an opportunity at the end for any wrap-up if I like. And I've, I've met most of you from working on the Budget Committee.
Okay. Um, I'm feeling guilty now about Councillor Stavanger having to ask the same question all the time. If you want to pick a question out of order, feel free.
That's okay, Mayor. I am not on the hot seat tonight, so I'm fine. Um, I'll just start with the first question, which is what do you think are the three most important concerns facing Milwaukee?
Okay. Thank you for that question. And I've got to say, I do HR for a living, so I'm not used to being on this side of the table. That's a lot more uncomfortable. Um, so I think, um, three of the biggest concerns facing, uh, Milwaukee, well, I, I didn't address this in my application, but I want to address it tonight. I think a big concern is just, um, revenue generation in order to tackle the problems or, or the issues. I don't think Milwaukee has, um, a lot of, I shouldn't say, there's always issues to address. But I think that, um, if you look at the budget and being in public sector for over 30 years and working with a number of different agencies in more recent years in my consulting practice, there's, all the agents, public sector agencies are facing some term at the jaws of death, others the, uh, jaws of opportunity, where you see property tax limitations as compared to cost of everything. And so, um, you can only cut material and services so many times and it's not the biggest line item. So how do you, you know, how do you continue to provide services, uh, to address any concerns of citizens and businesses? You're going to have to figure out other, uh, revenue generation. So I think that's a big concern, not just for Milwaukee, but for public sector in general. For Milwaukee in particular, concerns that I think need to be addressed, as I put in the application, I think livability for citizens, viability for businesses. And, you know, citizens, um, want to have resources within their own community hub and to have access to, um, storefronts, grocery stores, hardware stores, restaurants, et cetera, uh, so that they, so that they're nearby, it's convenient for them and they want a safe place to raise families. So I think for Milwaukee, in order to be able to continue to, um, attract families, uh, here is kind of, it's always been more affordable than a lot of places in Milwaukee or in Portland area. It's got a great location, um, and so we want to continue on with that trajectory. So I think that addressing those livability issues, uh, safety is a big concern anywhere in Portland metro area, um, for those that are housed and those that are unhoused. And so how do we keep, um, the, the entire population of Milwaukee safe and provide resources, the necessary resources in order to do that, which also contributes to the livability, um, of the area? And then, um, when I say the viability of businesses, once again, in order to create that livability for citizens, you have to be able to attract businesses that are storefronts and businesses want to know that it's a viable place, that there's going to be traffic coming by, that there's going to be, um, uh, opportunities to be successful and that the, the cost is going to be able to be maintained.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, Councillor Koshrobbani, you want to take question two?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, knowing Milwaukee has a limited tax base and budget, are there specific areas where you would reduce or increase funding?
As far as reducing funding, um, I don't think Milwaukee's got, uh, an overinflated budget to begin with. And as I said in the answer to my first question, I just don't, you know, every year, uh, for the last umpteen years, I've been in public sector, the request of budget season is hold the line or 5% reduction. And so departments are scrambling to try to take it out of materials and services rather than to cut. But, um, it's just not a big line item in a budget, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't cut. Um, there's not, I don't have any suggestions for cutting budgets. Um, but I think it's looking at the revenue generation side. I'm not sure quite what that looks like, but I think it would be interesting to learn more about that and explore more about that. I'm on this Citizen Utility Advisory Board and, you know, we're looking at, for, um, utilities which are dedicated services, it's easier to match your revenue with expenses there. But then the general fund is where it's really, uh, difficult. But, um, I think that's, so I don't have an answer right now as far as, well, what would I do to generate revenue? But, um, I think that what Milwaukee is fortunate to have is a very talented staff and city manager and that, um, the quality of the staff and city manager you have and the thoughtful deliberations here put us far ahead of a lot of other areas. And so, um, I think exploring with that revenue generation is what is important.
Thank you. Um, Council President Massey?
Sure. Question number three is what are your thoughts related to, uh, the city of Milwaukee's relationship with the surrounding jurisdictions, which include other cities, districts, the county, et cetera?
Are you asking what I think it is or what I think it should be? Or ideas for how to build those relationships?
Those, those are all valid.
Okay. Um, from all I know, I think we have a positive relationship. I think, um, I'm, I really feel, I, I know this sounds silly, but, or maybe I'm just trying to get this position, but I've lived in Milwaukee pretty much all my life. My first job, other than babysitting and berry picking, was at the Milwaukee Library. I mean, I'm a strong ambassador for Milwaukee and I will continue to be no matter the outcome of today. And so it might sound contrite or something to say that I think that Ann, as a city manager, matches up with anybody here. I think the councils that we've been fortunate enough to have the last number of years have been very positive, proactive and strong. And so I think, you know, we've got a strong trajectory to keep going. So our relationship in the region, Milwaukee's often overlooked, but, um, by some of the bigger players. Um, but I think we, as far as, um, comparison to other cities, we do very well. Um, we are, our police force actually responds to calls. Um, we have our, um, the houseless liaison, the behavioral specialist, you know? So we've, um, got information about climate action. So I think that we're actually kind of leading the region as far as other cities to size and that we have a good reputation and good relationship to build on. And those are things to continue, you know, you always want to look at the strengths of an organization or an individual and how do you build on those rather than, um, just focusing on deficits.
Okay. Thank you. Um, what do you feel has been accomplished by the SAFE program? Should Milwaukee maintain, increase or reduce the SAFE program?
I think continue to increase the SAFE program. I think that, um, that's part of the livability, having, uh, the, the pass to school, uh, through the neighborhoods. I think that one suggestion I would have is a lot of times, um, public agencies don't really do a very good job of public awareness and education. I think we're lousy at it pretty much. And, um, so citizens don't realize all the benefits that they get, um, for their taxes or why decisions are being made. So I'm out about and I hear friends or others talking about, wow, why is Milwaukee putting in these curbs on steroids and the bold outs and all? And, you know, I can talk to that, you know, to my friends and all, and when I hear comments about, well, these are traffic calming devices, so people aren't speeding through your neighborhoods, you know? But the more, so when you're doing a safe routes and that, the more that people can be educated ahead of time so that they understand why these decisions are being made and it's actually to their benefit and it's not just to be an inconvenience to them. And so, yeah, I think we should continue the program and I think, um, beefing up the education and awareness with citizens is important to have their support.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, so again, we have a few minutes left. If you want to add, you don't have to, but if you want to add anything in closing, you're welcome to do that.
Um, I think between your, um, application that you received from me and then me stumbling through the answers from this side of the table, instead of writing questions like I'm used to for interviews, um, you have a pretty good awareness. And like I said, I've been on the, um, Budget Committee and the CUAB now and... And like I said, I've been on the Budget Committee and the C U A B now. So I think, as you know, and from the application materials, that I'm not looking to run for office, but I am looking to contribute to the city in other ways. And so I think going into budget season with that experience on the Budget Committee might help be that steady hand until the councils filled again. And like I said, I just have a passion for this city. Some people question me, but I, I think we've got a gem here in the metro area. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Okay. Cheryl, you are up. You're up. We're running ahead. We are running ahead of time, so you're up, Cheryl. Cheryl Wampler. And as you know, because you got it by email, we have four questions for you, but you have 15 minutes. And so if you'd like to make a statement in advance of the four questions, a statement of introduction or anything, you're welcome to do that. Otherwise, we can launch into the four questions.
Okay, first off, I want to say that I am really impressed by the candidates. I've been watching from home and I'm no politician. I'm just somebody who wants to help. So when I, when I first saw the application processes, oh, I can do that. You know, I can step in as an inner kind of person. And I, you know, I have decided I would not be running for the office. I think there are people that are much more qualified for that. But I am an activist. You may have seen in my application that I'm part of Portland Raging Granny's. And one of the things that we want to do is try to make this a better world for our grandchildren. And so, you know, Milwaukee is a great place for them to grow up, but there's so much going on in the world outside that needs to be worked on, but we can start at the local, we need to start at the local level to make changes. And I will continue to be a raging granny and you'll probably see me sometimes. So I've been a Milwaukee resident since 2016. I moved here two weeks after retiring and I'm here because my son and his family are here. They live nine blocks away from me. So I moved here from the Seattle area and I retired from King County. And I worked there for quite a while as a technical project manager. I worked for, on transit projects, installing network infrastructure for transit projects, and that included on the bus, on the street, in the transit buses, wherever. But I handled all the network projects for them. And so I do have a really good idea of what it takes to work for government and some of the challenges that that does present. And prior to that, I worked very briefly for the city of Seattle, working on police and fire projects. So, and so I kind of see the difference between city and county and how that can sometimes be contentious. So that's kind of my background. But in 2019, I had the privilege of sitting on the citizens' jury, and I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it was a group of 18 citizens who got together for, I think it was four or five days. And we were posed with the question of should city council and the mayor, the compensation be changed? And so we had to get down into budgets and we had to study the city structure and we had to compare to other city structures across the nation. And it was really an intense kind of study. We broke off into separate groups of this. The people who were facilitating that were wonderful. But these 18 individuals, I'll tell you, we came in there with so many different ideas about what should happen. And it was amazing that after that time, we were able to reach consensus and we came in front of the city council and presented it. Now, I don't know where it stands as of today, because I never really heard about council voting or anything, maybe Lisa, you can tell me later. But anyway, it was, it was really a great opportunity and my love for Milwaukee grew in that process. So it's such a unique city. I've lived a lot of places, Washington, California. I grew up in Midwest in Iowa, and I have never felt so welcome or at home. You would not believe the difference between walking down the street in Seattle versus walking down the street in Milwaukee, because people look at each other and they talk to each other and they greet each other. And that, that just blew me away when I, when I moved here. So it's a special place. It is really a special place. And when I saw this opportunity, I said, I can do this, I can help out. You know, I, I have not done a lot of volunteer work for the city. I do, I'm very active in the Milwaukee Garden Club and we do a lot of the landscaping work around the museum, the Milwaukee Museum on Adams. And we also do some work at the Oral Hall Camp for the Blind. And, and we have a sensory garden there that we, we maintain. But anyway, I saw this opportunity, I said, I can do that and I can easily and happily slide into that because I kind of knew my way around government a bit.
Well, thank you for applying and we will launch into our four questions and I'll ask Councilor Stavon George, who's joining us from D.C., to start with the first one.
Hi, Cheryl. I have the first question, and it is, what do you think are the three most important concerns facing Milwaukee?
Well, safety, crime, and then the housing crisis. Just simple as that. And, you know, that's pretty universal, city to city, I think. But fortunately, it's not as severe. I don't feel that it's as severe in Milwaukee as it is like in Portland or whatever, but we need to really keep our eye on it, on all those things.
Can I ask a quick follow-up, Mayor?
Sure.
That you had mentioned safety and crime, and I guess I'm wondering, are you seeing those as two separate categories? Or I think a lot of us think of them as somewhat connected, but I want to hear a little bit more about why you listed those.
Well, I think of safety as, you know, walking down the street and being safe on the street and being able to cross the street and have the infrastructure in place to support a feeling of confidence with the, the safety in, in our, in our city. The other thing, crime, you know, I, I don't hear about a lot of crime, but there are incidents and I think we need to really be wary that we are not, we are not giving the opportunities for criminals to come in and harass us, if you will. It's, it's a scary world we live in. It really is.
Okay, thank you. I think I'm going to take question two this time. Knowing Milwaukee has a limited tax base and budget, are there specific areas where you would reduce or increase funding?
I love the events that we have in Milwaukee, but I think there needs to be a real balance between that and projects that need to be done here. And so the events are so important for building that feeling of community and engaging people. But I, I believe that increasing, supporting the safety projects are, are key to, like I said, the, the feeling of community where people can get out and feel confident there when they're walking down the street or, or at the transit station or wherever they are. That, that will help build community greatly, I think.
Okay. Thank you.
Did I answer your question? I, I think that the, the, we can supplement community events and find other opportunities to supplement community events while putting our funds towards safety.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Council President Massey, you want to take number three?
Sure. Question number three is, what are your thoughts related to the city of Milwaukee's relationship with its surrounding jurisdictions, which include other cities, the districts, and the county?
Well, I haven't seen much evidence of the relationships with the other jurisdictions. I, I know that there has been some ID, some talk, or I don't know what has happened really with the separation of the Parks Department and that kind of thing. But I know that those relationships can be contentious. I do know, I have a lot of friends who live in Portland and they say to me, wow, Milwaukee is really progressive. And they're just amazed and why can't Portland, where they live, do things that Milwaukee does, like Electric Avenue and, and, you know, all the, all the kinds of the sustainability fair? You know, they're just amazed that we do put the energy into that. So working for King County, I did see some contentious relationships. And where we had to partner on projects particularly, it was difficult sometimes, but we were able to work through them.
Councilor Kozlowski?
Thank you, Mayor. What do you feel has been accomplished by the SAFE program? Should Milwaukee maintain, increase, or reduce the SAFE program?
Increase. I, I know the Linwood project is part of that SAFE program, isn't it? And, and that's been a huge effort. I think some of the community has been frustrated with how long it's taken and some of the traffic problems it's caused, but I think overall, they see the improvements that are being made. And I am really excited about the Harvey Street project because that's just really close to me. And I don't walk my dog down that street because it's so dangerous. So it will really make a difference in the lives of people there. I know that that's, that's one street that has a bus, a school bus going down it every day and dropping kids off. And, and so it's really a dangerous situation there. So, so much Milwaukee doesn't have sidewalks, don't have ADA ability, don't have the bike pass. And I think, you know, those are, those are pretty critical to getting those in place for us to enjoy Milwaukee more.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. I will just note Milwaukee's portion of Linwood is finished. So, and has been for quite a while. The portion that you see under construction now is the county's portion of Linwood. So just for anybody watching out there who's frustrated by the, and I have heard it, I've heard it from some of the business owners in the Wichita Shopping Center and elsewhere, frustrations with how long that's taking. That's not, Milwaukee's part was from Monroe to Railroad and that's done.
Yeah, great, great. Yeah. Well, I was, I was pretty concerned about Monroe when we had that accident a few weeks ago where a woman was, was hit by a car. And that's again, no sidewalks, walking and people have their trash cans out. You have to get around.
Yep. So we're almost out of time, but if there's any last things you want to say?
No, I, I just want to thank you for the opportunity and, and I know you have a great selection of candidates and we will, as voters, have a good selection of candidates. And I, and, you know, I'm just impressed with all the enthusiasm and, and the knowledge and the youth that has stepped forward to participate here. I didn't know what to expect, so.
Neither did we. Neither did we. So thank you very much.
Yep.
All right. And we have one last applicant, Timothy Welp. All right, we are ahead of schedule by, oh, we are way ahead of schedule. Oh, so let's take a break. Let's take a break and come back at eight o'clock and maybe Mr. Welp will be here. Yeah, let's take a break and come back, we'll come back at eight o'clock. Thank you. Sorry, Rebecca, I know it's late there. I'm here all night, Mayor. I'm here all night, Mayor. Yeah. Oh, she's got us back online. Okay. It's eight o'clock, and so we're reconvening after our break. And we have our final interview subject, Mr. Timothy Welp. So I would invite him to come up to the table. Yeah. So you have 15 minutes, which will show up on the clock. And one of our councilors, just I'll give you a little background since you weren't here. One of our councilors, Councilor Stavon George is in Washington DC and is participating from there. There she is. And we have four questions, which I think you knew. You are welcome to give a little introduction, if you want to do that, before we launch into the four questions. We just have to keep everything to 15 minutes.
Yeah. Because it's, oh, first off.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hit the button on there so the red light comes on.
There we go.
There we go.
Very good. So first, I want to thank you all for the opportunity. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilman. My name is Timothy Welp. I have grown up in this community. I, you know, I moved to this community in 1967 from Gold Beach. And, you know, to be expedient with time, I have chosen work that has been kept me in contact with people in community. I've devoted myself to community building. And so as I think about going forward, changing, I'm thinking about retiring, I'm looking, where can I contribute? And this is one of the things that stood out to me. So when I saw an opportunity, I was excited to come and introduce myself and answer your questions and ask for your consideration.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks for throwing your hat in the ring. We had seven applicants, I think you probably knew that, but we had seven applicants, so you're number seven tonight, alphabetically.
Yep, it's all good. Yeah, you're in the home stretch.
Yep. So Counselor Stavon George, we'll start with our first question.
Hello there. First question is, what do you think are the three most important concerns facing Milwaukee?
Thanks for the question. I think that's a very broad question, but just in keeping it short, I think right now this community is growing pretty rapidly. And so there are overarching challenges about affordability. And, you know, at the same time, we also have issues, given the times we live in it, with tensions between new groups moving in and some parties moving out. So I think there is a great deal of importance on making sure that we address, we keep balance in the new energy coming into the city. I think there's, you know, my impression is that the city has really put its best foot forward over the last few years and has done some great work in revitalizing the downtown area. But obviously, that has to continue to be watched because that is a big part of what's attracting folks to this community. So, you know, the issue is, there are the overarching issues, like I said, affordability, but there's also the safety issues that come with the challenges of housing or folks being unhoused. And there is also real challenges around education, funding for schools. That's always a wrestling match. So my sense, trying to scour through all the documents that were available to me was, there's a lot of projects that are invested, and we have to figure out how to balance that and make sure we're keeping a close eye on community relations or being welcoming to everybody. I was quite happy to see, you know, kind of the overarching goals of, you know, the 2040 plan, so, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Coastal Robine, you want to go with question two?
Thank you, Mayor. Question two, knowing Milwaukee has a limited tax base and budget, are there specific areas where you would reduce, increase funding, excuse me?
Super important question, but I'll just be very transparent. I don't, you know, I've worked around, so for 25 years, I've worked as a labor representative, dealing with budgets with big school districts, with large organizations, state agencies. I don't think I have enough information to make a recommendation. What I think I would want to be doing is studying and catching up, doing homework, because I don't feel like I have, to make a suggestion that things should be expanded or reduced would be a guess, and that doesn't seem like a very wise thing to do.
Fair enough. I'll go with the third question. What are your thoughts related to the city of Milwaukee's relationship with surrounding jurisdictions, be that other cities, Clackamas County, special districts, et cetera?
Tough question. I don't have a lot of experience in, you know, relationships between communities, but I'm confident that our community members are traveling through our neighboring cities and organizations. And so same with their citizens, we're needing to have good relationships. And I think both communities or surrounding areas, looking for opportunities where we can kind of leverage the needs and the opportunities that we have to keep those relationships going, because we have to have a high-functioning relationship. So I think that would be the heart of what I would want to tell you is, is what I've been able to duck. I've been thinking about this question today, and I think, you know, relationships between leadership, looking at the dynamics between, you know, our local businesses and some of the larger industries, surrounding areas, all those things have to be kind of brought into consideration.
Thank you. And Council President Massey?
Question number four is, what do you feel has been accomplished by the SAFE program? And should Milwaukee maintain, increase, or reduce the SAFE program?
Sure. The SAFE program, I think that's what stands out to me in some of the changes that I've seen over the last, oh, I don't know, handful of years. I live on 32nd, I've been there for 14 years. I grew up next to North Clackamas Park, and so I've watched downtown Milwaukee, I've watched this community, whether it's out in, you know, Lake Road or the surrounding areas. I've seen a marked change in kind of beautification. And so I think the SAFE program has had a great deal of positive impact. I think what, I think there are some probably background challenges with the SAFE program, and I think that tilts a little bit toward making sure that we maintain, you know, kind of a welcoming community for everybody. And by that, I'm trying to keep this, it's a very large question, keeping it short. I believe Milwaukee's on its way to being a very desirable community, and I think folks with resources will certainly be looking and be able to move in. And I think that creates challenges for our community members that do not have as many resources. And so figuring out, I think the SAFE program, to me, it looks like a wonderful, ambitious, and important program. But I think there's also community relationships and making sure this community stays welcoming while at the same time keeping safety in mind. I mean, that's always going to be a fundamental. Those things are, I think, all part of the puzzle, but, you know, I think, I would not have a recommendation about expanding or reducing the SAFE program, because, again, I'm looking at it through, you know, pretty limited perspective as someone just kind of reviewing documents.
Okay. Thank you. So we have some time left to your 15 minutes. You don't have to use them all, not everybody. We haven't used all of it, that's why we were ahead of schedule. But if you have any things you'd like to say in closing, you're welcome to make some further remarks.
Thank you so much. I think I have to admit, the questions are important and broad, and seeing the timeframe, I was a bit challenged to figure out how to be efficient. I think the piece I would really want you all to hear is pretty much the direction I've chosen to work or, you know, contribute my, you know, what I can in my life. I've chosen to work with a community, whether that was for 18 years as a mental health professional, working with children and families, or when I moved into working as a labor representative, working with all different kinds of groups throughout the state, but most of it in and around the Portland metro area. I've devoted myself to building community. I've been a, one example of that is I've been involved in Jobs as Justice, which is a coalition of faith and labor and student groups and community groups, a coalition trying to make sure that minority voices are heard. You know, I think it's critical for this community to achieve the goals that are stated in the 2040 vision, that there is, you know, a fair amount of energy put into building relationships and creating opportunities for community groups to express themselves and to educate us. And so that if we really want everyone to be welcome, that is the harder work to do because we do need to deal with community challenges, roads, sidewalks, accessibility. That's tangible and very straightforward. The pressures that go on between different community groups, that's a real problem, too. Both things need attention. And I think I have a unique experience, you know, working through all kinds of complicated stuff. I've worked in coalition with any number of types of boards and community groups. So I think, you know, it feels a little odd bragging about myself, but I think I have a skill set. I think I have the discipline to work through and understand the financial budgets, having been a negotiator, having been a labor representative for all kinds of, you know, giant corporations to nonprofits. So I think I have a skill set that has something to offer. I expect you've had a number of very good candidates tonight, and I hope whoever you choose, you know, helps this community continue to grow the way it has. I'm going to continue to live on 32nd, and I'm going to continue to look for opportunities because that's kind of what's given me satisfaction in my adult life. So I appreciate the opportunity, and I'm going to look for a way to contribute somewhere. And this was a very obvious thing that I had to at least explore. So thank you for the time and your attention, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for throwing your hat in the ring. And I, we will move to deliberations shortly, but I did want to say for you and for Cheryl in particular, if you're not selected for the, well, for everybody, for anyone who's not selected tonight, we are looking for people to serve on our boards and commissions. Many member, many of the applicants tonight already serve on a board or commission. But we do have that application process open through April 1st and, you know, the library board, the parks board, various boards and commissions here in the city, attorney board, for which we're looking for people. So there are ways to get engaged in the city if you're not selected tonight. And I would encourage you to, you know. And Scott, who was your contact for these interviews, he can send you that info. He's also the master of that process.
Can I offer just one more comment?
Yeah, sure.
I just wanted to appreciate, Councilman, I'm not sure how to say your last name.
Coster-Boddy.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to appreciate the comments you shared for the vigil tonight up on 32nd in front of the hospital. That was helpful. That's, I'm around that a lot right now. And that is an example of the community work that is pretty critical for all of us, so thank you.
I appreciate it. I work in veteran mental health, so.
Okay, yeah, very good. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay. So councilors, we have a hard decision. We had seven very interesting candidates. We know some choose, some are just offering to be an interim candidate, and others are people who will run for the seat in May. I guess I will kick off and just say that I am, I am inclined to appoint someone who will just be an interim candidate. I think we had three, you know, I'm inclined to appoint someone who will just be an interim candidate and let the voters of Milwaukee make the decision. I mean, I think we have some good candidates to come out in May and run for the office and make their case to the voters of Milwaukee. So that's kind of where I sit. Anyone wants to jump in? I mean, I would, I guess, I guess I'll even go a step further and say that my first choice would be, I think, you know, we have two people from our budget committee, which is good because we are going into budget season. But I think my first choice would be former Councilor Abma because he's, he's been at the table for a lot of things and a lot of, you know, at budgets and other things. And I think he can jump right in and be up to speed really fast for the three and a half to four months of the interim position. Other people's views?
I also would support Shane Abness's seat on the city council for the interim position. And I think, you know, the things about the interim timeframe and all that are very interesting, but really to me is that, you know, it's sort of a disruption to the flow of the council that we've had. And I just want to minimize that disruption and continue with, you know, a good workflow and that kind of thing. And I think with Shane's professional experience, his experience on the council and throughout the city, I think that his contributions will be immediate without a lot of spend of time and that kind of thing. And so I think that that's important for us in this short term.
Who wants to go next?
Is Adam in a stare-down with me? Is that what is going on?
I didn't realize you could see me. Rock, paper, scissors?
Well, I didn't realize that we, I just have a top three. Are we, are we starting with one and only? Or how, we haven't really talked about how we want this to go.
Should be discussion right now.
Yeah, if you've got a top three and you want to talk about why they're top, your top three, sure, feel free.
Okay. Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you to everyone. I was blown away to see eight applicants in the pool and to see seven of you, you know, really share so much about your history and your experience today is amazing. And I'm thinking in my mind how I can possibly work with all of you in some capacity. So it's really just been amazing to listen. And, you know, Mayor, I appreciate what you said about, and Council President Massey, about having an interim. I was actually thinking the opposite in that, you know, we have so many pieces of what we do on council that require kind of layering pieces, you know, and thinking a year in advance or 18 months in advance. So I was, I was kind of leaning more toward folks that would be interested in running in my thought process. And so where I'm at with it at this point is Anderson, Hester, Abma. So those are the top three. And then I'm, I'm coming up with plans of reaching out to all of you to see if you'll be interested in working in some capacity with the city or with me directly.
Yeah, I see the, I can see the benefit of both. And I do have a top three. What makes me lean a little bit towards what Mayor Beatty and what Robert was suggesting, Council President Massey was suggesting, excuse me, was the fact that we have so many great candidates, and I would hate to be the one that unilaterally makes a decision for the community on that. And I do, I mean, it can be a bit of a, because you got to run in May, then you got to run in November. That's a lot of campaigning in the middle of a budget process and along with some other things. So I do, I do see the benefit of the stopgap, of having somebody like Shane be appointed to have that, what is it, about three, four months to fill that gap and then allow the voters to make their decision on so many excellent candidates, at least those who are looking to run. But again, I also recognize your point, Counselor Stavon George, because if we have a great candidate, I mean, either way, there's going to be a campaign, right? There's going to be two. So I do see that point, which doesn't really help anything. But if I was to narrow down to my three, I would, I would do Shane, Abma, David, Chis-
Pizza's on.
Pizza's on, yeah, Chis is on, because he told me that, Chee, and Will Anderson. And that's just where I currently sit on this, with these candidates. And I also do, I'm sorry, I think people are waiting for me to say this, we're a bit spoiled, I think we can all agree, right, on candidate choice, because there's a lot of them. And I don't, I don't want this to be a, I went through this process not too long ago, actually. It was terrifying and sucked. But I, regardless of what that outcome was going to be, it wasn't going to deter me from running, period, if that's what was something I was looking to do. So with saying that, I want anybody who doesn't get elected or appointed who wants to continue to do this and run, please do run. I mean, you have some options coming up this year. But yeah, I'm, that's kind of the three that I'm currently hovering around.
Okay. Well, I do want to second what Rebecca said if I didn't say it earlier, because I certainly meant to. I do feel like we had, we were really blessed to have so many people apply for the position. I didn't expect to have eight applicants, and it was, it was great. And it was great to meet the people that I hadn't met before. And I do, yeah, I do share the hope of getting you more involved in Milwaukee. I thought I heard two and a half in there for Shane Abma. We need to get to three to have, to have a consensus. I do, I had not thought of the point, to be honest, I, yeah. I mean, I had thought of the point of him being able to get up to speed quickly, the fact that he's not planning to run in May, meaning no, you know, no diversion, so to speak, to run for an election maybe. But I hadn't thought about the budget and running a campaign during budget season. I mean, that's a good point. That's a good point, campaigning in the middle of budget season, yeah, that's a lot to do.
Well, Mayor, if I may, you know, it's, it's up to the individual person's capacity whether they are able to run a campaign during budget. I mean, I think some, some of the applicants, actually all of the applicants we heard from this evening, but some, you know, just overall, folks have superhuman powers. And so I would be hesitant to say that they wouldn't be able to run a campaign during budget. If anything, I'd rather have, you know, like our ranked choice pool come back up and maybe answer a couple follow-up questions from us before we, before we say one thing or another, since they're in the room.
I'm not crazy about that idea. I'd like to see us get to closure. The judge is waiting, and they're all waiting. What do the other councilors think? Do you want to have further questions?
Well, I, I think that we've agreed on the questions and the interview process, and I think that we need to stick with it.
Yeah, I would agree with Council President Massey.
And I'm proposing adding an additional interview question. I'm proposing letting the applicant answer the question about whether they have the capacity to run a campaign and attend to county, or to city business, in their own words.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, I don't think we need to bring them up for that. I will take your point that they could make that decision for themselves, you know.
The one, the other benefit I do see about appointing, you know, somebody who isn't going to run besides that, or at least leaning towards Shane, is that, you know, there is a learning curve when you get on council. There does take some, I mean, you get handed a fat binder, probably about that big, or now it's digital. And there's a lot to have to review, and a lot that has to, because it is, the budget is a big thing coming through, but it's not the only thing coming through. There's a lot of stuff coming through. And it just, it does take time to, if it's somebody that's not familiar with a lot of processes, and, you know, how council works, it can be a steep learning curve in some cases, and it can, you know, in such a short time, it's a lot to learn in such a short time. Because no matter who gets appointed that is going to run again, it's not guaranteed they'll get elected in May either. So, you know, is that learning curve going to cause an issue for what we have coming in as well? Not saying that people can't do, but again, you got to learn that, then you got to run the campaign, and then you got to focus on budget and the work that's at hand on the agenda. So just, it seems like a lot, even if, you know, you have some experience in dealing with this stuff, it's still a lot, you know, it's a charter, there's certain specifics you got to know about. There's still some stuff that needs to be learned, so that's the other reason I see the benefit in the appointment of somebody who won't run, considering Shane because of his experience, really. But it's tough because Will is an incredible candidate, and I think David is too. And I know David's having a kid, but I would suggest that you think about maybe running in the future if it doesn't happen tonight. But I do see what Will can bring to the table as well. And yeah, I did have a couple of conversations with him, but that was more about Milwaukee and the city, not about the appointment. And there's a lot that he brings to the table. So it's tough for me, between the three of them, again, it's difficult. So I see the point.
Well, I do agree that Will's got a lot of energy, and he's obviously done a lot of homework. And, you know, he brings a lot to the table, as do some of the others. I know Corey Hester also very active on our Equity Steering Committee and other, you know, with the Police Department interviewing and all the equity work that has been going on since 2020. But again, I don't, I don't like being in the position of prefetching for the voters. I like the idea of letting the candidates make their, the candidates who want the job in the long term make their case to the voters and, and let the right one, let, you know, and let the will of the voters determine who sits on, in the seat longer term.
Did the mayor and the council president have any other candidates in mind, or you were just settled on one?
Well, I'll answer that question. I don't think that my process is really much different from the one that you described for yourself, you know? I had, you know, I had a top three, but ultimately, you have to choose one. we have to choose one. And, you know, and then take a vote. So the answer is yes. I had a, had a similar thought process to the one that, that you've described. I didn't verbalize it, because I just think we eventually have to get down to choosing one person.
This is hard.
Well, and that was, Counselor Costa-Badi alluded to himself having to go through this process. And at that point, there was a kind of a two-to-two stalemate, which is why the guidelines we got from the city manager from this, about this was if there's no, if there's a stalemate, there's no appointment. So I guess are we, I, I'm not saying we're at a stalemate, because I haven't heard down to a, a single candidate from everyone, but just, just so you know, that's where we, that, that is, that is the, the marching orders. That is the game plan. If we can't get to consensus, three, three-one anyway, we may not have an appointment, which I think would be unfortunate.
Well, I really appreciate, I'm just going back through my notes, because I think that, you know, we probably all wrote down things that resonated with us. So in, in Shane's interview, I really appreciated what you said about the cost of personnel and the budget constraints that the city is, is within. I think that, you know, it also really connected with me about the relationship of jurisdictions. And I appreciate that you have the experience coming from Metro. I think that in our conversation with Will, you know, you also highlighted the city budget constraints and union negotiations, which may also contribute to those constraints. I appreciate the relationships that you have with the legislature. And I wrote down that, you know, especially around some of the conversations with the transportation package coming up and the alignment that's happening, I guess I'm thinking about that lens in terms of some of the liaison assignments that I have for council in transportation conversations that are already starting now. So that really resonated with me. I'm thinking about in ways that we can leverage that. So sorry to belabor things by verbalizing more, but I feel like at least having my rationale out there is helpful. And Cory, you and I can have a conversation offline, because I have a few ideas.
Oh, look at me. Everyone's looking at me. Yeah, I definitely don't want to leave here without appointing someone. And I do want to point out, I appreciate everybody that applied for pointing out affordability. Yeah, this is interesting.
Would you like us to take a break?
Uh, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. We will take a break until a quarter till nine.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we're back on the record, and Counselor Stavon Jordan is back with us, and we've had a break. And we were at two, unknown, unknown, I guess, is how I would characterize it. So I don't know if Counselor Costa-Badi has come to a conclusion.
Yeah, I mean, God, can we take another break? Yeah, this is very difficult. And, and, you know, again, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not using somebody not running as, as a, how can I say, that's not a criteria. I don't want to refer to it as a criteria. It, it's more as a preference with what's coming up. So I, I don't want to confuse anybody in, in the sense where it's like, you know, that's something that is, is like a check-the-box deal. It's not part of it. But there is a lot coming up in, in these next short three, four months. I think about that, that the, the time, the, 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 the learning curve of it, and, and what really gets, for me, really is, is it's tough to make unilateral decisions for a city of 21,000 people, right? So especially when there's four of us doing it. It's not exactly the democratic process, but this is as close as we can get with what we're dealt with right now. And I just, I, I feel like I, I wouldn't necessarily want, especially with it so far away, I wouldn't necessarily want to preempt an election and make that choice for voters in such a short block of time. And what also hits me is, is not to say anything about any of the other candidates, but I, I do truly believe that Shane can hit the ground running. And we really won't skip a beat because of how familiar he is to the community, to the budget, to the process. And I, I just, I just feel like it, for the situation we're in now, it gives us our best opportunity without having to, without having to, how can I say it, muddy the waters in, in the future election, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. It sounds like we're at three-one for, yeah, sorry, Mayor Beatty, Counselor Stavon Jordan's handing it over.
Yes.
Please, Counselor Stavon Jordan.
Yeah, just one other point. I, I feel like if we wanted to limit the, the appointees or the interviewees to just people who are going to run, we should have just put that on the application, and it would have saved everyone a lot more time. So I, I don't understand, this does sound like an additional piece of criteria. And Shane, honestly, nothing about, nothing against you. I'm, I'm actually just stuck on this process piece. And, you know, we went through, Adam, you and I, an appointment process, and granted, you and I had intentions of running otherwise, but this was not even a point of conversation. So I'm, I'm really having a problem with why this is such a sticking point in this situation.
Well, with our process, there, there was only three of us, and I think all three candidates were going to run in that. So I, I think that if, if council at that time was So I, I think that if, if counsel at that time was presented with a potential option of additional candidates who weren't going to run, that might have been a consideration that counsel would have rightfully been able to consider. And we only had to run one campaign. And that campaign was about, I mean, the election was four, five, six months away, pretty much from when we were appointed. So it gave us, one, a little bit more time to get acquainted with the city in terms of the processes, uh, that, that giant booklet that we get. And, and again, it, I feel like it also, there, there wasn't a, like, when I got in, like, my first meeting was the budget meeting, but it was voting on the budget. It wasn't discussing the budget. So, you know, we didn't have that in the middle of the process either. And, and I do think it does take an understanding of Milwaukee and Milwaukee's budget and where we're at. And, and it's a very important budget. We're, we're looking at some serious issues in our budget. And, um, again, I just, I just think for, for where we're at and, and the situation, the hand that we've been dealt, I just feel like right now, a stopgap candidate is a little bit better than, is a better route to go than somebody that has to campaign. And again, I don't, I don't want to preempt, uh, the election either. Believe me, it's, 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 this isn't easy. It's not easy at all. I mean, I, between the candidates, the three that I chose, it's, it's a very difficult pick. But again, for where we're at, I just feel like this going, going with Shane is, is the best option considering where we are.
I guess I will just add, as somebody who was on the selection, you know, at the time, yeah, the point that Counselor Kosterbani just made is absolutely right. All three candidates were intending to run, that was clear. We did not have a candidate who was not intending to run, so that's why it wasn't a dialogue then.
And, okay, so then I'd like to table the question for, for counsel to consider, whether we even want to have, um, you know, maybe the interim just be set for folks who don't have plans to run.
I'm sorry, can you, I guess I'm not sure on my Robert...
Yeah, here, I'm...
What do you mean by table the question?
I'm interested in continuing the conversation with counsel about their preference to have an interim just be interim and not be someone who's interested in, in running for the seat. I don't want to discuss it tonight because, um, the, you know, council's already made it clear that they're not interested in deliberating, um, or verbalizing anymore. And it's almost midnight for me, and so, um, but I would like to continue this conversation.
Fair enough.
Uh, yeah, I, I'd like to too, but I, I, I think it's a, it's a bit of an oversimplification. Because I, I'm considering also where we're at in our year for the city. The two campaigns that have to be done, the, the number of candidates that we have that are interested in running, I mean, those, those are all factors. I, I don't want to oversimplify by just saying I'm just interested in somebody who's not going to run, because that's not the case at all. Like I said, my preference in terms of somebody running is Will Anderson. That's, that's bar none. That's, that's simple. But I also consider this as well. I don't want to leave this room in a stalemate. And if Mayor Beatty and Council President Massey are going to stick with their pick, then I don't want to, I don't want to handcuff our council either, right? So both of those candidates to me are great. I mean, even David, as I mentioned before, all three of those candidates are great, but it seems like we're narrowing more towards Will and Shane. And I'm, I'm, I'm fine with either one, but if I do go with Will, then it's two to two, we're at a stalemate. Right? So...
Well, I guess I would say, um, Counselor, that you and I both put forth a top three. And the other two counselors put forth one person with zero justification based on their, uh, what resonated for them during the interviews. So, um, yeah, it would be, um, deadlocked, but I'd like to hear a little bit more rationale.
From the other two counselors?
And I've already, in part, asked for it. Council President Massey, um, didn't want to go into the, uh, his, his prioritization process. And I don't want to put words in your mouth, Council President, but, um, I am really interested to hear what the mayor and, and, um, and Council President are thinking in terms of the two, the two candidates that we're discussing.
Um, well, I think I said it before, but, um, I think Will is a strong candidate. I fully expect he will run and be a competitive candidate for the opening. I don't want to be in the position of choosing for the voters of Milwaukee. And if I had, were pressed to, uh, pick three, I don't know where the pick three came from, but if I were pressed to pick three, I would have picked all people who would not be running for the office. And we had some other strong ones who serve on our budget committee.
So in answer to your question, Rebecca, um, I also think that Will was a strong candidate. I thought that Shane was the best candidate for the situation. In my original rationale, I said that the issue of people not running was interesting. I didn't say it was a criteria. Because I said the most important thing to me was someone who had the experience, uh, who could hit the ground running, no spend of time, uh, because the flow of the council had been interrupted because of the vacancy, and I wanted to continue that flow to the greatest, uh, possible, you know, success factor that we had. And so that's my rationale. And, um, I'm, um... I just think it's time that, uh, that we, uh, get moving on with a reconstituted council at this point. And, uh, we had all kinds of good candidates. I urged them to run for office, apply for boards and commissions, uh, because we need people like this. And, um, I remind people that the first time I applied, uh, for a position on a commission, I wasn't selected. And, um, someone encouraged me to keep applying. And so, uh, that, another day came, and so, um, I was grateful for that, um, that encouragement and that kind of thing. And I would encourage all of those who've applied to run for office, apply for other, uh, appointments and that kind of thing, because what I heard loud and clear from everyone here tonight is they love this city and they want to contribute.
I appreciate that, thank you, both of you. I know this is a very late night for you as well. And I, I don't want this discussion to diminish, um, the love that all of the applicants have for Milwaukee or the, uh, involvement that they will continue to have in the city. But, uh, healthy deliberation is a good thing, so thank you all.
Okay, um, dare I ask for a motion?
I move to appoint Shane Abma to the vacant council, position three, on an interim basis until May 21st, 2024, special election results are certified.
I second.
It's been made and seconded to appoint Shane Abma to the vacant council, position three, on an interim basis until the May 21st, 2024, special election results are certified. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, say no? You voted aye, Counselor?
I did.
Okay, great, great. So the motion carries unanimously. So congratulations, Mr. Abma. And I believe that Judge Graves is in the wings waiting to swear you in so that you can start reading the budget. And we thank everyone for coming out, for staying so late, uh, for throwing your hat in the ring, for taking the risk, as Corey said. I mean, I really think you all took a risk, everyone took a risk, and that we appreciate you doing that. It's not an easy thing. You know, we, as mentioned before, we only had three candidates last time we did this, so it was, it was quite startling to have seven, and we really appreciate everyone coming forward. All right, so with no further ado, I will, um, we will, I don't know how. Do we stand, do we get out of the picture? Do you, what, do you want that? No.
I was gonna say we stand to one side, except you're all, you're, they're all in place.
Okay.
Does this work?
I guess, okay.
Okay. Good evening. If you'd please raise your right hand. This way. And repeat after me. I, Shane Abma...
I, Shane Abma.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution and laws of the state of Oregon...
That I will support the constitution and the laws of the state of Oregon.
The charter and ordinances of the city of Milwaukee...
The charter and ordinances of the city of Milwaukee.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties...
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties...
Of city counselor of the city of Milwaukee...
Of city counselor of the city of Milwaukee.
And the county of Clackamas...
And the county of Clackamas.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations and welcome. And we have a couple copies we can sign here.
Shane, do I have your so much name up here?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll have you sign. All right, Counselor, Council President Massey has already cleaned his place at the desk, but we actually officially have to adjourn. We don't have anything else on the agenda tonight, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. Second.
So I move to second that we adjourn. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None heard? We are adjourned. Get some sleep, Counselor.
Just please, Rebecca, get some sleep.
Good night.
Good night.